Meeting for Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, six oh one. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one M R S A subsection four zero three dash A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight one one nine four one five three six eight seven and password five three three zero six or via computer at the link on the Sanford website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city of Sanford website at W W W dot Sanford Maine dot org under email city departments slash city council. Um, we're going to begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and we're going to do this a little differently and into the future. I just have to say that the pledge of allegiance really, the words of it really have some have meaning for me and I would, I just think there's just too much, too many people not to, not be able to do it together. So I'm going to ask tonight, um, everyone to mute their, um, microphones and councillor Stackpole will be saying the pledge of allegiance for us. And going forward in the future, I will, it will say in the agenda, pledge of allegiance and who will be saying it. And hopefully when the day comes and we're meeting in public, maybe we'll be able to get a boy scout or a girl scout or someone to come and actually lead us in the pledge of allegiance when we're at our regular meeting. So, um, if you could all just, um, mute for just a moment and.
You're muted, Anne Marie.
I muted too early. Thanks councillor Stackpole, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll follow this with a moment of silence, please? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stackpole. What? Now I'm going to go on to the. Roll call councillor Martel.
Present.
Councillor Hanselman.
Present.
Councillor Tuttle.
Present.
Councillor Stackpole.
Present.
Councillor Lanigan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I'm Anne Marie Mastrocchio, the mayor of the city of Sanford. We're joined this evening by Steve Buck, the city manager and Larissa Ricketts, the manager's executive assistant. First item on the agenda are the minutes from twenty-one dash twenty-seven dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, January fifth, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
No movement, madam mayor.
That is a motion by councillor Tuttle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by councillor Lanigan? Any discussion? All those in favor, I will call the roll again. I forgot, we have to do it this way councillor Martel.
Approve.
Councillor Hanselman.
Yes.
Councillor Tuttle.
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole.
Yes.
Councillor Lanigan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. All right, we're going to go right into the mayor's report and city council subcommittee reports. Um, I'm going to just ask for clarification, do we usually do the subcommittee reports first and the mayor's report after or the other way around? I just want to make sure. Is there a preference?
The mayor's first, madam mayor.
Thank you. First thing that I, um, I did want to record on the, um, the, the meetings that I had last week outside of, of regular council subcommittee meetings. Um, the, um, deputy mayor and I and the city manager and finance director Ronnie Champlin met last week with the chair and vice chair of the school committee, that's, uh, Chair Don Jamison and Vice Chair Paula Cody and with the superintendent of schools. And we discussed a number of issues. Um, the pri, the, the first item that we discussed was the super, the superintendent gave us a COVID update that all the schools are on full remote until January twenty-fifth and it wasn't just cases of students with COVID, it was that was also a staffing issue at a couple of the schools. You have people out or people that are in quarantine, then you don't have enough people to staff the school. Um, we discussed, we had a really great discussion, I think, with, with the, um, the board chair, the chair and vice chair. Um, we discussed the budget process and our desire for both boards to work collaboratively with each other and with the budget committee as well to address the unique challenges of creating a budget this year. Uh, we expressed a need for transparency and access by any and all interested parties. And we reviewed with them the proposed changes to section, section six of the rules or procedures that you'll be seeing later in this meeting. And we invited their input particularly as it relates to the rules for virtual public meetings and workshops for all city boards and committees, and they were in agreement with the changes that we made. We also discussed, um, the school buildings and future use and which ones might be turned back to the city and which might be retained by the school department. And the schools that we discussed and the buildings were the Memorial Gym, the Willard School, Lafayette and the Anderson Learning Center, they haven't made any decisions yet. I think everything is, is going to be looked at in the next. Um, they expect the new elementary school to be completed by June first. Um, and the core building committee will be meeting this week to receive an update on the progress to date. Uh, the school committee expressed, uh, to us that they would like us to participate in the development of a process that would engage the community in a discussion regarding the naming of the new Sanford Elementary School. The joint school and city committee would not choose the name, they will not choose the name, but ultimately that is the responsibility and right of the school committee. But the school committee agrees that community input is an essential element of any decision that they make. And I will be appointing the members from, um, out from the municipal side later this evening in an agenda item. And finally, uh, we made a firm commitment to meet at least monthly, believing that communication between the two legislative bodies is important and necessary. And the date and time will be decided by the city manager and the superintendent. And I think that pretty much concludes my, um, mayor's report. Um, I think. Anybody doesn't know, anybody, any questions at all? I didn't, um, report on, that's later in municipal operations, never mind, never mind, I'm getting this all mixed up. So let's start with, um, subcommittee reports and, um, anybody want to go first?
Uh, I'll go first.
Thank you councillor Stackpole.
Yep, uh, the, uh, both the zoning subcommittee and the solid waste, uh, subcommittee, uh, met, uh, last week on the twelfth, uh, and, uh, just to view the agenda here. Um, we, uh, we did have, um. Two issues that are on the agenda for this evening. Uh, first of all, uh, was the zoning and land use table regarding mental health and abuse clinics. Uh, we have found, uh, I think a, a compromise which the subcommittee was, uh, in agreement with in totality, uh, so, uh, we can discuss that at the appropriate time, uh, but we'll be mov, we're moving that ahead. And, uh, also the zoning regarding, um, medical marijuana signing, signage for medical marijuana production facilities. Uh, these are businesses, uh, and, uh, uh, once again, we can discuss that in more detail when that, uh, item comes up on the agenda. Uh, also, uh, solid waste committee, uh, we, uh, uh, essentially, uh, we, we reviewed our situation with regards to contract renewals, uh, and, uh. So, uh, our, our contract, uh, for, uh, solid waste and, and, uh, I'm sorry, it's not solid waste, uh, it's recycling, uh, is coming up and of course this all mixes together, uh, literally and figuratively here, uh, in terms of, in terms of funding. So, um, uh, we're, uh, examining our options. Uh, I believe city, city manager Buck, uh, presented a, a very detailed, um, spreadsheet, uh, and detailed information on what our options will be coming up in the future. Uh, we do need to get this done in case there is some, uh, some budget implications for it. Um, but, uh, it's in, it's in good stead at this point. Uh, we know where we're headed and we're examining our, our options. Uh, and, uh, that was the, the basis for it. It was a, a beginning meeting for looking at, uh, what our future contracts, uh, options are.
Thank you councillor Stackpole. Do any other members of that, that's, those two subcommittees have any comments that they'd like to make or add?
Well, madam mayor, councillor Stackpole did a wonderful job.
Thank you councillor Tuttle. Um, I'm going to report on the municipal operations. I'm going to just discuss the items that are not on the agenda tonight. Um, one was, um, a proposition to a charter amendment proposal to change the makeup of the budget committee to the seven member city council and five member school committee. We discussed it extensively and decided that we're going to bring this back to the council in early April and discuss whether we want to bring this before the voters in June. And we also discussed that we'll be bringing forward a required charter commission and review for the November ballot and it's expected that the budget committee and the budget approval process will probably be few of the items that will be up for review anyway. Uh, the airport manager presented the updated airport, updated airport business plan to the subcommittee and, um, I'm happy to say that the council and the community will see that presentation at a meeting in February. It was really impressive and I really just can't wait for everyone to see what, what's going on at the airport. Um, the other item she presented on, a lease amendment to the pilot's code cafe, we'll be discussing, uh, later in the meeting. Public safety discussed, um, COVID monitoring and updates to the city's participation in vaccinations. I know the city manager's report will cover a lot of these issues, so I'm not going to really go into them except to say that, um, COVID enforcement efforts were, were presented by chief Connolly and will be ongoing especially in the area of the social clubs and eating establishments. And he reported generally good compliance, but he'll continue to send his officers out for surprise checks. Uh, we heard a request to reactivate the fire station feasibility committee, which will, which is, had, was on the agenda, the council agenda almost a year ago. So I asked for this to come back to the two thousand and twenty-one city council to reaffirm and discuss the membership of the working group and their responsibilities and expectations since two of us were new people and really I wasn't familiar with it and going with, what had been going on and I expected that maybe councillor Martel felt the same way. Um, the land bank, uh, the main issue with the land bank was that we changed the meeting times from the second and fourth Tuesdays to the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month and we'll meet at eight forty-five. And Ian Househill reported on the remediation and demolition of the old mill on the Jagger Mill Road. I took a ride by the other day, it's all gone, but I, I think there's probably still some hazardous materials that are. Staying there until they can be removed, but the D A P, he said, has been very helpful and the mill is down. Um, and I'll, I'll just say that it was probably my fault that the meeting before the land bank meeting went over, so we didn't get a chance to really go through a lot of the things that I know Ian wanted to. So, um, we're going to work on that and, um, he basically brought us up to date as, he couldn't bring us up to date on all the properties, but we have quite a list of properties that are in various stages of redress and I just am really impressed with the work that, uh, that they're doing, the land bank authority. I think that's it. Any questions from anyone before I turn it over to Steve for the city manager's report? Okay, Steve, it's yours.
Okay, let me pull a report up here for you. There you go. So I'm going to give you a very abbreviated report tonight because I know we have, uh, three very, very extensive presentations and, uh, followed by a large council agenda. Uh, for a COVID update, I put a link in here to the governor's update that came out last week, I think it was last, uh, last Wednesday. Basically, the state has looked at, uh, reprioritizing the phase one A, phase one B and phase two elements of that, the predomin, the predominance of which is a continuation of the first responders, the E M Ts, uh, the licensed E M Ts here in York County have been fully vaccinated, uh, and they've started on their, uh, for their first dose, they've started on the second round of vaccinations, uh, for the second dose for their licensed E M Ts. Again, that's all, uh, dependent upon availability. Uh, just today we learned that Maine received forty-four hundred doses, uh, distributed out to thirty-five different locations for which the temperature monitoring system that's associated with each of those packages, uh, had shown a default. Uh, so those forty-four hundred doses were taken offline, were not able to be utilized. Those forty-four hundred doses have been, uh, added to our acquisition for a subsequent week, but nonetheless, that's given an, an extensive delay as far as vaccinations are concerned here in the state of Maine. Uh, critical, critical COVID nineteen response personnel, people who work in, in or directly with COVID nineteen response at the Maine CDC, uh, as well as individuals in the IDEX labs, Abbott laboratories, uh, all the labs you see listed here have been added to the phase one A, they've been raised and elevated in priority. Also in phase one B, the governor has added, uh, in, in conjunction to the first responders, which are non-licensed E M Ts, which would include police officers, firefighters who are not E M Ts, dispatchers, uh, and a few other smaller categories in there. The governor. Excuse me, the governor has added to phase one B, uh, those individuals that are seventy years of age and or older. Uh, they were added in here as a higher prioritization to get, to get them vaccinated much more rapidly, uh, due to the, the number, there's a hundred and ninety-three thousand people over the age of seventy here in the state of Maine and they are one of the most vulnerable age categories, uh, within, uh, the COVID response. Other elements that were addressed in there, uh, is the people with high risk medical conditions. They've been added to the phase one B, they will come after, the age seventy has been completed and again, the timing of that is all dependent upon receipt of the vaccination, uh, doses themselves. Uh, the state is still working on defining exactly what high risk medical conditions are and what those prioritizing, priorities would be. And then moving into phase one B would be frontline workers, uh, the governor's trying to shift the conversation from saying essential workers to frontline workers and, and better categorizing them. Uh, the strong recognition that all employees, all workers are essential, uh, but creating a, a, uh, level of priority within, uh, the phase one B as far as the frontline workers are concerned. Then phase one and phase two is the general population, uh, for those people, um, that are between sixty-five and sixty-nine, they'd be taken care of in the phase one A now, but when we get to the phase one B and, uh, complete that, then the general population, the phase one C and phase two, still being determined, which include people from age sixteen to sixty-four. Uh, and that's where the mega centers are deemed to, to come into play. I can't give all of the information publicly, but I can say that Dr Shaw was here, uh, in Sanford this weekend inspecting a, a particular site to stand up as a mega center. Sanford would house the mega center for, um, all of York County. Uh, they, they want to stand that up sooner than later and as soon as vaccine, vaccines are, are available, they want to see if they can, uh. Do, uh, a minimum of a thousand doses, uh, in, in a week and then ramp that up to a thousand doses per day. Uh, so, Chief Benati remains such and chief of that, working in conjunction with the York County Emergency, uh, Management, Incident Management Team, Director Art Cleaves, uh, they're doing, uh, by all accounts at the, at the state level included, York County has done an exceptional job in standing up for vaccinations under phase one A and they will be a critical part of standing up for this mega center as well. So I'll give you more information about that publicly as I'm allowed to, uh, disseminate that information out. Clean energy, Governor Mills also put out a statement, uh, last week and I've put the link here to the full statement, uh, the recognition, uh, that she is committed to creating a flourishing clean energy sector in Maine to combat effects of climate change on our state, strengthen our economy and grow sustaining, good paying jobs across Maine. Uh, what's in that for Sanford, you, you ask, uh, it's, it goes to our bottom line. So the city is making an aim for itself as far as, uh, green energy development in the, in the realm of solar. Uh, the extension will allow for the P U C to put out new power purchase agreements, the acquisition of community solar and other commercial and industrial categories, uh, that vies well for the large scale, is, is nearly fifty megawatts of additional solar power slated to come online in the next two years in Sanford that will bring us to a hundred megawatts. This opens up even new, uh, new and more viable opportunities for power purchase agreements for those projects. Next I have an element in here that was provided by the Maine Department of Transportation. This comes from the, uh, continuous working arrangement between our Public Works Department and the state of Maine. This is for the reconstruction of Route two oh two, River Street and Cottage, so starting seven tenths of a mile, uh, outside of town, just to the east of the good old hospital campus, coming up over the hill and bringing that all the way into the, um, Main Street intersection, Main Street and Lebanon, uh, to go coincide also with the traffic light improvements in there. So starting on January twenty-fifth, uh, the M D O T will release, they'll make this available to the link that's provided here. Uh, I thought this was going to be a Zoom conference, but it's actually, they're going to post the information there. Just a minute, I've got to mute a mic out here. Got it? Uh, they're going to make this information available, the link shown here on the screen, it's a live link, uh, in this report. You'd be able to see all of the information pertaining to the reconstruction of the street, the sidewalks, there's going to be drainage improvements in there. Uh, this is a multi-multi-million dollar project, they'll make that information available and, and then allow for public comment from January tw, uh, January fifth through February fifth. So it's out there, uh, excuse me, from January twenty-fifth through February fifth.
Steve, can you just wait a second? I see councillor Tuttle's hand up and I don't know why, but I think he has a question about the Cottage Street construction, am I correct? Councillor Tuttle?
Yes.
Uh, no, no, madam mayor, it was about, um. A percent of compliance, Steve, with fire EMS and police dispatch. I know, uh, chief of an audience said that there were some that refused the vaccination.
Yeah, so I've, um, I can't remember the specific number, but the percentage, I, I think it was, um, I think seven of our workforce, so approximately fourteen percent of the workforce and that compares to, uh, seventeen or eighteen percent as far as the, uh, medical workforce across the state.
Well, uh, it was mentioned to me too that one of the problems with Alfred was there was a very high rate of non-compliance. You know if that's accurate, Stephen?
Uh, as far as the current situation with the department being shut down?
Yes.
Um, I, I guess councillor Tuttle, I wouldn't comment on that directly. I, I don't think that particular situation complaint, uh, um, pertains to the level of vaccination. I think it pertains to the community spread and a number of the individuals within the department being the same place at the same time.
Thank you.
My final question is about, uh, many states are, uh, doing the sixty-five and above where Maine is one of the few states that, uh, is doing seventy and up. I may talk to the governor's office about that and maybe get back to you on that, Steve.
That's because you're too young, correct?
That's correct.
It's good to be too young sometimes, John.
Well, yeah, yep.
Thank you, Steve, go ahead.
All right, the last, uh, couple of bullet points I hid here pertains to the governor's L D one budget. Um, yeah, I took this from the last legislative bulletin, so these aren't my, my bullet points. I want to thank Kate DeFor for putting that, uh, exceptional document out. Uh, as noted in here, uh, last Friday, the governor put out the, uh, L D one for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, which will form the, the basis of the general fund budget. Uh, compliments in there that this is a eight point four million dollar budget. That's a fifty-six, fifty-seven million dollar increase in spending over the previous biennial budget. There is two point six three billion in K through twelve education in there. Uh, the state's proposal, uh, proposed contribution to those expenses towards education is one point two four billion, according to, uh, their calculations, that is fifty-two percent of the fifty-five percent goal overall, but still an exceptionally strong budget. Uh, I did not put in, into the bullet points here, but in the advocacy group that I participated in Saturday, uh, Friday, uh, there's an indication, uh, that the local mill rate effort, if I remember right, drops by about eight tenths of a mill. So that is a significant, uh, positive point as far as, uh, our local taxation is concerned. Other elements that were put forward in there is that municipal revenue sharing will be preserved at its current level of three point seven five percent. Um, they have up, increased the projected. Contract, um, distribution from a hundred and twenty-seven million to a hundred and thirty-eight million in the current biennial budget, uh, the current fiscal year that we're in, so we'll start seeing that response. They're projecting for the next fiscal year that we're budgeting for now, a hundred and forty-four million dollars worth of distribution and a hundred and fifty-one million dollars for the subsequent year. Uh, so that is not a small amount of money. Uh, our current revenue projections is, uh, just over, uh, two point four million dollars. Uh, the hundred and forty-four million, uh, would, would increase us by about four hundred thousand dollars and the hundred and fifty-one million would increase us by closer to six hundred thousand dollars from our current point. So that would be, go a long ways to offsetting net taxation. There's also ninety-seven million dollars in the L D one, uh, to continue to fund the homestead exemption at, at twenty-five thousand dollars, so at its current level and, uh, also preserve the seventy percent reimbursement to the municipalities to offset that homestead exemption. Further, there's ten point four million dollars in there for general assistance, uh, which is a, an exceptionally strong point. So all of these points here go to the state playing its, its role as far as offsetting property tax relief, uh, fulfilling its obligations towards K through twelve education, the same thing on revenue sharing, although it's not the five percent, uh, it is what the advocacy groups were, were asking for, was to simply preserve our current position within the state's budget, uh, and to not see any further reduction in there. So, uh, my compliments to the administration for the budget that they put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions? Any hands up, I see all of yous. Hey. All right. Questions, we will. Who has? I heard.
I have a, I have a question, I guess, I guess now is appropriate.
Councillor Lanigan.
Um, so, has there been any talk about lifting the nine P M curfew on restaurants? Um, being able to serve their clients? Um, I know it's becoming a burden, uh.
I, you know, councillor Lanigan, I understand your interest in that, but that really is, I'm, I'm in an interest of moving things along. The governor hasn't said anything about that. Everything with what I've heard and I listen to Dr Shaw and I am in contact with people in Augusta and I, we could ask, um. Councillor Representative Tuttle to comment as well, but I just, um, would like to just make us, make sure that we move things along here and I just don't think that that discussion right now has a lot to do with what we're talking about.
Because since. No, and that's, that's fine. The only reason I brought it up because we mentioned the enforcement and then we mentioned just what the state's want, so I just didn't know. Now, I'll make it in custom, uh, comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go to communications and presentations. Twenty-one dash twenty-six, six dash zero one. Um, quarterly report and presentation from the director of Sanford Regional Economic, Economic Growth Council and we're going to turn it over to Jim Neinen.
Can you hear me, Mr Crocky?
I can't see you though, Jim.
Do you not see me?
I cannot see you, I only see a telephone.
I, I have my phone connected, I was getting a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, bad interaction when I had to go through the computer, but.
Oh, so you don't have your video on and I thought you were doing both.
I do have my video on, if, if I can see myself, others can't see me?
Nope.
I can see you, Jim, you just, um, you might have to scroll over to.
Oh, okay, you think he's on another, I didn't see him at all on my big one.
Um, no, not on the big window, but in the top, top bar.
All right, uh, shall I begin?
Yes, I see you now, go ahead.
All right, thanks so much. Anne Mastrocchio, deputy mayor Hurley, members of the city council, happy new year, uh, first.
Could you turn up your sound just a little, Jim, please?
Testing one, two. Testing one, two.
Little bit louder.
Yes, one, two.
That's better, thank you.
I'm gonna bark at you then, here we go.
It doesn't sound that loud, really.
Okay, again, we're, we're pleased to be here, obviously to, uh, to bring you the quarterly report. Uh, I wanted to speak quickly, I know we have new members, uh, Ma'am Strachey, you rejoined us, uh, on the, on the, on the Growth Council Board, having been with us back in the beginning, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. For others, very quickly, uh, Growth Council background is that we are a five oh one C six nonprofit corporation, established in two thousand nine for economic development purposes. Uh, we have seven board members, city from the Industrial Development Corporation and the Chamber, two staff people. For people that don't know me, uh, I've been almost ten years running the Growth Council. I spent, uh, the previous three decades at the state level, uh, with the Finance Authority of Maine, with the Department of Labor's job training system, running, uh, Tax and Center programs and the Business Development Office at, uh, D E C D. And, uh, as I left, uh, state government, I departed, uh, from the governor's office as the economic advisor, Governor Baldacci. So again, serving the past, uh, well, the administrations, uh, with McKernan, with King, and with Baldacci, uh, across those, uh, across those decades, so I'm dating myself just a little bit. Um, tonight, in, uh, in attempting again to be brief, we do want a couple, uh, cover a couple of projects for you, as well as get a, uh, an update for you from the marketing campaign on our quarterly report. Uh, first of all, I'm pleased to announce that Harrison Development Company is moving to, from, uh, from Kennybunk to Sanford with their six employees. Uh, they were referral to us from, uh, from the Dunham Group that's worked, uh, pretty extensively at the, uh, at One Eagle Drive to get tenants in that building. Um, Harrison Development will be on Spotted Drive, they purchased and then developed parcel across from, uh, Casco Bay Molding and Big Fish Fence up in that area of South Tampa. They're a commercial real estate company, uh, that is, uh, focused on environmentally conscious buildings. They are looking to build, uh, this spring, a new warehouse and office space, sixteen thousand square feet, twenty-eight foot height. They have high efficiency roofs, walls, solar panels for net metering, geothermal heating and cooling, L E D lighting, rainwater recovery. So again, they are, uh, practicing what they preach in terms of how they, uh, go about construction in our community. Uh, they're gonna occupy about ten thousand square feet of that facility. They'll also have three rental units that will, uh, obviously say more about, uh, you know, to the people that we work with, the companies we work with, uh, but each of those will be fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet. So we look for a, uh, quite a little project there to develop, uh, through the course of twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one. Their construction portfolio, you can, you can learn more about it on their website, they fit development projects in Peabody and Chelsea Mass, as well as South Portland and Kennybunk, Maine. And we are featuring them on the Growth Council website in January, uh, featured business, TampaGrowth.com, January dash featured dash business, you can find them there as well. Second company I wanted to talk, uh, about is New England Battery Storage. They're a private energy firm in Boston that's focused on development of utility scale battery storage projects. And, uh, we started working with them in the fall of twenty eighteen. Their, uh, their CEO and their finance company, uh, both the Growth Council, then we involved the I D C for their property on Sour Road, so they are building, uh, this project on Sour Road in one of the last, uh, parcels the I D C has there, up past Seacoast Hardwood on the left, that, uh, Sour Road development. They've done projects in Maine, uh, in Madison, uh, back when I was able to actually travel and, uh, physically get up there, I was able to look at that project with the CEO. They're also completing a project in Rumford. The Sanford facility will be four and a half to five million dollar investment, there'll be a couple of part-time jobs. Um, they have done their, their C and P interconnection agreement, they've gone through planning board last month, uh, they close on the I D C parcel, uh, at the end of this month into early next. And, uh, again, it's a five megawatt facility, and, uh, that, that basically over ten megawatt per hour, which means that their battery can reproduce five megawatts for two hours, how they rate those. Uh, the facility that I visited had batteries located in three containers, Sanford it will be in two. I wanted to give you quick feedback on how the CEO, uh, saw the review process with V H B, their engineers. He said Sanford's very progressive, planning and development staff have been great, by far the most professional, well-organized group that we've worked with. Overall, they were very impressed. Um, next item is Stent, uh, Stent Trust. Those of you that have been around a few years know that, uh, that Growth Council's been involved in this, in this parcel, this, uh, this piece of land and the real estate there for quite some time. Looking back in our folders back to twenty ten, we've been working, uh, since this fall with the, uh, with the owner, Sanford Sewage District, as well, uh, as being a seller, as well as, uh, an experienced developer out of Boston, uh, Wood and Companies. And, uh, they have been negotiating good faith, pleased to say that they have a fully executed purchase and sales agreement for that property that they signed on January twelfth. Uh, again, after enlightenment comes the laundry, so we have a signed P and S, they have a due diligence phase that they're going through over the next few months, uh, but they're very excited about the, uh, the prospects for primarily a housing project there, as well as some consideration for retail and commercial on that first. We stay tuned, we'll obviously share more about that as we know more.
Jim? Jim, this, this is Steve, can I pause you for just a moment?
Certainly, I'm, I'm trying to hear...
Just a point of, just a, just a point of inflection, uh, to, for, uh, Counselor Tuttle, uh, that we just hit the easy button, Counselor Tuttle. Said it, it wouldn't be done, but we hit the easy button, gonna be redeveloped.
Thank you, I knew, I knew we had to call it something, it's always easy, but thank you for that. Um, so, One Eagle Drive is up here, just to let you know, I wanted to, again, you have, I've, I've tried to keep you apprised of that, of that, uh, fallow industrial building, they have great developers that showed up into town, their, their strength really is improving industrial buildings that have, that have been laid, laid low for a period of time. Uh, they put, uh, you know, a ton of work and effort and money into that building, getting it up to speed from the roof to the HVAC, to installing, uh, natural gas, getting Sanford Net Fiber into that. But, but the conversation I had last week with the developer, they had a very uncommon and very busy December. I just want to convey that, that, you know, despite COVID nineteen and, and the tremendous, uh, slowdown that that's caused in a number of places, number of investors out there, they're looking hard at that facility. You know that we did a video recently to, uh, to get the word out about that, using both the, the, uh, the developers as well as myself, making the pitch for Sanford and this facility. Uh, again, they have, uh, four prospects that they're working with right now, uh, they, their intention, their hope, their expectation is to have that building mostly full in twenty twenty-one. But again, uh, as I, as I can give you more details about that, I'll certainly provide, uh, the Sanford Net Fibers on there, just to give you a heads up, that the, uh, we finished the take rate survey that we have talked about with you in the past. We're focused now on really peeling back what we're calling the near fiber companies along the Sanford Net Fiber routes, along those forty-five miles. We have about three hundred and fifty identified, um, and as part of our, part of our fifty thousand dollar grant that we got from D E C D, we are looking to understand better what the needs are of these companies. We, our intention is to expand Sanford Net Fiber to have more subscribers. Uh, the company that we've worked with before for the first phase will help us again on the survey process, and, uh, our commitment to D E C D, the Community Authority, T D B G program is to have that done, uh, by June thirtieth, so that's, we'll be moving that pretty quickly. We'll also be focusing with, uh, G W I over the next six months on a marketing campaign that will keep, uh, these companies apprised of Sanford Net, uh, and the compelling reasons for, uh, switching to it and fitting on that network. The, uh, last two items, and then I want to, your chance to hear from, uh, Jen Caneely with marketing. The Maine Working Communities Challenge, uh, the Boston Fed with philanthropic groups, and, uh, the governor announced this, uh, this challenge, they've been doing it, I think we're the fifth state in New England that they've challenged to, uh, come up with a quote-unquote "big idea" that makes an economic impact on some of the, uh, lower income populations in your communities. Sanford is on that list as a priority community for the, uh, for the challenge. We've been meeting, uh, honestly, almost since the, uh, since the moment we got the PowerPoint presentation from the, uh, from the Boston Fed. It's a group that includes, uh, York County Community Action, uh, uh, the Community Development, uh, Division, a department within the city, Grant Rider, uh, WABAM, the schools, libraries, Y M C A seniors, so again, it's a, it's a broad group, I don't think I've caught everybody there, but, uh, it's a big tent. We are using Sanford Net Expansion as sort of our, our starting place. How can we use high-speed fiber combined with, um, the, the right equipment and the right training and education to make a, a difference for economically disadvantaged households? So that, um, that letter of intent went out in December, there is a award phase for the design, that those applications are due, uh, at the end of January. That's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant if we were successful. For the six-month period, there's also a three-year implementation grant phase that awards three hundred and seventy-five thousand to five communities. So we want to be one of the eight to get the planning money, we want to be one of the five to get the education money. Uh, all that will be happening through twenty twenty-one. Um, and we have, uh, we have the city council representative, Ann Hanselman, that has been, uh, been part of that as well. Um, Main Street Maine is on there, just to let you know that the, uh, the affiliate process continues with the Maine Development Foundation to their, um, to their development, um, to the Maine, um, downtown center. Uh, they, the center hosted a, uh, a ninety-minute community discussion, we had about forty different, uh, folks show up, participate, listen, weigh in, um, and we have also scheduled an additional, sort of the next, next place for us to have a conversation within of this month, I think it's the twenty-sixth of January, where, uh, we'll be joined again by the, uh, the Director for the Downtown Center, as well as other communities that are interested in pursuing, uh, downtown affiliate status. Um, that, yes, in time, that application is due on October first, so we'll have a chance to sort of, uh, sit, sit through the level of energy enthusiasm, these type of projects, as those of you, uh, that are listening in know, they take a lot of, uh, a lot of throwing up the sleeves and a lot of work that goes into it. So, again, January twenty-sixth, we'll be looking at the next steps for affiliate status. And finally, I've begun conversations with, um, with T P D around market rate housing, uh, in the, uh, in the Roberts and Main Streets apartment buildings. Uh, again, we know that's been a top priority for this, uh, for this council, uh, in the past, uh, in the past few years, and so, again, anything we can do to get a, uh, strong market rate housing presence in our downtown, know that we need to be vibrant, we need, uh, human beings walking around, interacting, uh, and spending money in the downtown. That's, that's my, uh, that's my brief report to you. I'd like to turn it over to Jen Caneely, Caneely and Company, set you up on the quarterly report for marketing.
Hi, good evening, can everybody hear me?
You're good, Jen.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for having me this evening. Um, so currently, we're doing a lot of different initiatives that we've been promoting through video, uh, social media and MailChimp. Um, I would just recommend doing three things when you get an opportunity. One, to like the Sanford Growth, um, Facebook page, and also sign up for MailChimp, and then you'll see what we're putting out regularly to the community and business owners. We also, um, just recently signed up for Instagram, so we're looking to grow that social media, um, so we reach a younger audience, uh, to let people know what's happening in, um, Sanford Springville. As far as the marketing in October, November and December, uh, we covered a lot of different categories. Um, one, we have been doing a weekly restaurant feature of the week, and that's being really well-received. Uh, one, we just want to remind people that it's safe to go out to eat and promote, um, local businesses. And then we also are doing a hiring piece, um, again, with COVID and everything so negative in the news lately, we just wanted to promote some of the hiring that's taking place at local businesses, especially with the Behavioral Health Unit opening, there are a lot of good jobs in, uh, Sanford Springville, so that will also help promote the community activities and things to do, as well as, um, school things. Um, we worked a lot on the Sanford Net Fiber Residential as far as getting the information, um, to do the surveys, and also the Maine Downtown Association, uh, getting feedback and getting that out to community members, and there was over forty people, uh, that participated in the very first meeting, and I think that will continue to grow. On the business side, we did a lot of outreach, uh, for COVID nineteen resources available, um, as far as grants and loans go. We also promoted One Eagle Drive and Sanford Net Fiber. The Sanford Net Fiber, I think it was really well-received, and now going forward, we're really partnering and making a, um, joint marketing effort with G W I. So I think you'll start to see an increase in, um, subscribers over that, over the next six months as well. Coming up this quarter, I'm really excited about some of the new videos we have coming up. Uh, we're doing a testimonial video shoot from the, um, Brink's family next week, as well as business recruitment. So you'll see that on W M T W and, um, the C W, as well as social media. Then we're also gonna do, um, like I had mentioned, the Sanford Biz three fifty, to continue to, um, promote Sanford Net Fiber and G W I, as well as classes, um, again, we're a business resource as far as how to start a business, how to, um, get better at QuickBooks, and different, uh, categories like that. Any questions on the marketing and advertising, or anything I can answer for you this evening on our goals and, and how we've been approaching the marketing?
All right, Jen, thank you. Hearing Neinen, I guess I would hand the gavel back to the mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Hey, any questions of Jen, anyone? I don't see any, Jim. So, thank you, and we will go on to the next report presentation that we have, um, twenty-one dash twenty-eight dash zero one, annual report presentation from the Sanford Trails Committee, and I think we have Hazen Carpenter and Lawrence Furbish here tonight.
Hazen Carpenter, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you perfectly, Hazen.
Okay.
And I can see you too.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am Strachey, all, members of the council, City Manager Buck, it's my pleasure to deliver the Sanford Trails Committee twenty twenty annual report. First, I want to thank the city of Sanford and the Sanford Trails Committee for their support. It has not been an easy year with viral meetings, but we've accomplished much. February twenty-fourth, a final decision was voted to name all trails of Sanford Springville, meaning the Mouseham Way, City Trails, and any future trails that parallel the Mouseham River north and south, to be named the Mouseham Way Trail and bear the logo Mouseham Way. This includes any trail that circumvents any pond, river, city block and so forth, and still connects to form a continuous trail. Rail Trail, Historic Walk, Farm Trail, River Trail, and any others, shall be designated Sanford Trail and bear the name of that trail. After nearly eight years, we are closing in on completion of our drive for updating new signage. This includes mostly directional signs along the trail, and it costs a cost of two thousand dollars, along with many hours of committee work. New trailhead maps have been developed and are now being printed. We are working on new map brochures to be printed this year. We're in the process of building new wooden display structures for maps, historical and other necessary information that will be installed at all major trailheads. Fifteen granite posts, same from the, saved from the demolition of Emerson School, have been placed as markers for our trailheads, will have the Mouseham Way logo. Lox locks have been placed on trail, rail trail entrances that have gates. And that's, another much-needed project was on a rail trail. A grant written by Libernet, part of which also benefited the Sanford A T V Club at another location, allowed us to build a section of the rail trail near Dering Pond to prevent erosion, and also install a Beaver Deceiver at the outlet of Dering Pond. These measures will efficiently prevent... These measures will efficiently prevent natural flooding and thwart Beaver-made flooding as well. Major problems with homeless prompted David Janeske to close off one trail on his property. From a closed section, a bridge was removed, saved and has been relocated on city rail trail property which connects to Moussum Way Land Trust property. Many thanks to David Janeske for opening, keeping open the Boardwalk Trail, helping us with grading, moving the bridge and also to Frank Austin in helping with placing the bridge. Thanks also for the Sanford Police Department for their ongoing work with the homeless. Lot of time and effort was spent on ATV issues, specifically the ongoing wear, tear, noise, dust, speed and so forth. The ATV Club has tried to cooperate. We installed speed signs, explored and experimented with ways to alleviate these problems and now have a pending grant for trail improvements. We are continuing our fair effort to make connections to city trail by installing signage from Gordon Park, Moussum Way South and North and along other street connections. Currently, and we have completed this, engaged in a joint venture with Moussum Way Land Trust to make a much-needed trail connection from the rail trail to Blanche Road going through the McKeon Reserve. Not only will this encourage uses of both the rail trail and the McKeon Reserve trails, but also and most importantly, it provides access through an easement through maintenance equipment and emergency equipment to the rail trail when needed. New bylaws have been drafted and submitted to the city for consideration along with a list of volunteer members. We are fortunate to have a devoted, hard-working committee. We've logged in over six-hundred-and-fifty hours of volunteer time, a significant contribution to the trails and to the city. In conclusion, we are working on priorities for twenty-one, twenty-two. We are hopeful the city will continue its financial support and its grant writing for us. Likewise submitted, Hazen Carpenter, Chairman.
Thank you, Hazen.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Can I just say, Hazen, I just, I want to thank you and the whole committee for all the work that you do. I have, I have the opportunity to walk on the trails with my dog and it really is enjoyable and there, and it's, it's just a wonderful asset that we have for our community.
Thank you. I, I hope to come back later on this year uh with a slide presentation once we have all these things in place. And also, uh, I've taken a few uh council members on the trail. Uh, I'm open anytime anyone interested in going out, uh, we can ride around to show the different trails and we can ride on the trails and I want to show them to you, show you what an asset we really have. So anyone's interested, give me a call.
Thank you. I'm planning to do that in the, in the spring, Hazen.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to ask or add to Hazen's presentation?
Uh, this is Jonathan. I had a question around the maps. Um, you mentioned that you were getting those printed up. Um, are, is there a soft copy that would be available on the Sanford website or anywhere else that people would be able to download and print out for themselves?
Oh, they definitely will be on our, on the Sanford website. Uh, right now, uh, what I have is what's being printed. As soon as we get those printed, we'll, we will put them on the website.
Okay, thank you.
We have maps on there now, but we're updating them. There's a lot of new trails and everything. We're updating them, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Available, yes.
Thank you, Hazen.
And in addition to the trailhead maps, a lot of people on the trail get in the middle of a trail and they seem don't know it at all. So we have smaller maps that'll be in, in the divided trails sold it. We really, I mean, it's a lot of money, but the time you add the maps, the signage we've done in the last ten years, you're looking at over ten thousand dollars. That's a lot of money, but people need it and it's a good thing.
It's absolutely a good thing and it's been most appreciated during this time when we sometimes had to be socially, we have to be socially distanced from people, but we can do it outdoors in a really beautiful way.
A lot of people use our trails uh because where I live, uh, there's always five, six, ten cars parked at the rail trail. Uh, when I'm on the trail, I meet all kinds of people. Uh, so they are getting used and it's a great asset to us. Thank you.
Thank you. And can I just say that I really like the use of the um, the granite from the Emerson School?
Thank you. And once we get the logo on there, it'll look really nice because no matter where people go, they ride by, they're gonna know that's a Sanford Trail.
That's right. Thank you. Anybody have anything else to add? Thank you. Thank you very much, Hazen.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Um, next is twenty-one dash twenty-nine dash zero-one. Presentation from Partners for Healthier Communities and I don't know who's doing this presentation this evening.
Um, that would be me and um I'm here with two other partners. My name's Caitlin Malloy from um Partners for Healthier Communities. Um, we are a local coalition um dedicated to preventing substance use in western York counties. Um, and I am here with um Brent Coleman and Nicole Cordo if they'd like to introduce themselves.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Oh, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Nicole Cordo. I'm one of the school counselors at the middle school.
Good evening, folks. I'm uh Brent Coleman. I'm the outreach worker with the Sanford School Department and uh we really appreciate your time tonight.
And we really appreciate you being here this evening, so why don't you go ahead and present?
May I have permission to share my screen?
Uh, that's up to Steve.
Oh, yes. Yep. A moment, please.
We absolutely appreciate you fitting us in so soon.
Was it Nicole that asked for permission?
Oh, Caitlin.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just a moment. There you go.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so like I said, my name is Caitlin from Partners for Healthier Communities. Um, and we're here to talk about uh the data from the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey from two thousand and nineteen. The purpose of this presentation is to share uh data on current trends, attitudes, accessibility um of harmful substances reported by Sanford Middle School students and Sanford High School students um through the two thousand and nineteen Integrated um Health Youth Survey. Um, and that is um, that's a survey that is used annually to assess at the health status of Maine youth as well as uh positive and negative attitudes and behaviors that influence um healthy development. Um, an important reminder um that we would love you to keep in mind when listening to this information is that this, this, all of this, of this data was collected in February of two thousand and nineteen. Um, so as you're listening, just keep in mind that none of this data reflects um substance use trends and other trends during COVID-nineteen, um which we feel is, is pretty important to, to remember. Um, and for, in consideration of everyone's time, um we're gonna present and then if you have any questions at the end of the presentation, uh we would love to take them then. So to get started, uh current use here is determined by reporting, uh students reporting using these substances at least once in the past thirty days. Um, as you can see, marijuana, prescription um medication, alcohol and combustible cigarettes. Um, a rates for current use reported by um middle school students and high school students. Um, they did not, uh, they showed no or one percent increase from two thousand and seven. Um, and all of these, um, all of these trends are in line with Maine state average for both middle school and high school students. Um, it's important to note here, unfortunately, um no vaping data was collected for the middle school and high school. Um, but we are working closely with the CDC and the coordinator of the survey to ensure that that data is um definitely captured on the next round of surveys because obviously that is um pretty critical information to us. Um, an area of concern we found with current use, um rates of prescription medication misuse reported by Sanford High School students, um that's almost twice um as high compared to um Maine state average of high school students. So it's nine percent versus five percent. Um, and when we say prescription medication misuse, that's referring to um students taking a prescription medication that is not prescribed to them. Um, so that is one area of concern that should, should be of consideration going forward in planning activities. Um, when looking at perception of harm, this can be a little tricky. Um, this data does not necessarily mean that youth are using more. Um, the lower the numbers, um, the better. The higher the numbers that you see, um, means that more students are um perceiving a substance to be of little harm or no harm at all. So it can be a little confusing when you first look at that information. Um, youth believe that marijuana is less harmful compared to past years. Um, this could be a direct result of shifting attitudes towards marijuana, uh the hemp industry, the CBD industry nationwide and um in Maine, um as well as legalization of recreational use in Maine. Um, you can see that there's a steady increase, um which means that they are, teens are not perceiving marijuana to be as dangerous as um say in two thousand and twelve or eleven. Um, and that can really be aligned with legislation in two thousand and thirteen. Um, for example, votes on um blurs in Portland passed question one, two point five ounces of marijuana was no longer um a, an offense. Um, that was followed by two thousand and sixteen, Marijuana Legalization Act was passed and now we have the um Office of Marijuana Policy Adult Recreational Use Program. Um, and responses for Sanford High School and Sanford Middle School are in line with state averages, so this could be um a good indication of an overall um consensus of all middle school and high school students statewide. Um, I, we really wanted to point out why um marijuana specifically is so important. Um, especially when talking about the youth use, um your brain is not developed until your mid-twenties, uh best for learning thirteen to twenty, middle school, high school age. Um, that frontal lobe where that star is, that is the part of your brain that's responsible for impulse control and good judgment. That's not gonna be developed until at least age twenty-five. Um, it's their voice of reason. So when youth start using marijuana at such a young age, it really interrupts their, their natural brain development and leading to a number of issues from memory impairment, learning, um, learning barriers, impulse control and the list could go on. Um, accessibility increased by two percent from um, from two thousand and seventeen, but remains in line with all high school students statewide. So fifty-three percent of high schoolers in Maine overall uh report easy access to marijuana. Um, more interestingly, uh Sanford Junior High students reported easier access to marijuana compared to middle school students statewide, twenty-two percent versus sixteen percent. Um, and accessibility increased by three percent as well from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen. So we're really seeing an increase um in accessibility of marijuana for specifically middle school students in Sanford. Um, so um, the perception of harm, um more high school students in Sanford believe their parents would not find it a little wrong or wrong at all. Um, if they use marijuana, and that's three percent higher than uh high school students statewide, um so it's twenty-two percent versus sixteen percent. Um, I apologize, twenty-three percent versus twenty percent. Uh, fifty-three percent of Sanford High School students believe that their friends would not find it a little wrong or not wrong at all if they use marijuana and that's three percent lower than uh Maine's high school average, which is interesting. Um, six percent of Sanford Junior High students believe uh their parents would not find it a little wrong or wrong at all, um, if they use marijuana and that is in line with the state average of seven percent. Um, before I turn it over to Brent, um, he's gonna take you a little through, a little bit through the alcohol data, um, want to point out air, another area of concern of the high school students in Sanford that reported um using marijuana at least once. Out of those Sanford High School students, twenty-seven percent uh report using marijuana for the first time before age thirteen. Uh, so it's twenty-seven percent compared to seventeen percent of high school students statewide. Um, and that is a pretty critical data point because as I just discussed, um, the earlier teens or youth, all youth are using marijuana, the more, uh, more likely they'll have issues down the line, whether that be developmental issues, legal consequences, um, and increased risks of other substances. So I'm gonna turn it over to Brent.
Thank you. So we're gonna look at the perception of harm of alcohol. Um, so the, oh, yeah, I'm on the right one. Okay, that's all right. So the data indicates that uh nineteen percent of Sanford High School students are not perceiving alcohol to be as dangerous as other high school students uh compared to in the state of Maine, which is at twelve percent. Um, and we did have a two percent increase since two thousand and seventeen of Sanford High School students that think uh having one to two drinks of alcohol every day um is, is risky. So what else I want to uh present here and kind of going along the lines and I guess giving everyone to have the perception that uh though twenty percent, almost twenty percent, so nineteen percent of students perceive alcohol not being dangerous, uh that eighty percent of students did not answer that way. Uh, so I, I just want, I want to give everyone a positive outlook on this, that eighty percent of students did not answer that perceived, that they perceive alcohol as not being dangerous. So um as we go through the data, we'll kind of look at it that, from that lens as well. Um, and then moving on to parental and peer perception of harm with alcohol, um, it's in line with the state average. Uh, this is important because um relationships and friendships amongst uh teens within their peer groups is really important to them. Um, and teens are more likely to use alcohol if uh, if the use is normalized and that goes for not just alcohol, but other substances. Um, and looking into this data, nine percent of students uh didn't think their parents would mind them drinking versus six percent. Again, I'm gonna go back to how you look at this. That's ninety-one percent of students that probably answered that their parents do mind. So um though we're a bit above the uh state average on this, uh we are at nine percent. So it's something to keep an eye on. Um, and then moving on to access to alcohol. Uh, Sanford High School students reported a lower rate of someone furnishing alcohol to them compared to uh Maine and so that's thirty-two percent of uh students versus thirty-six percent, so we're uh below the average there. Um, this rate has decreased by five percent since two thousand and seventeen, both for the school and statewide. Um, I think within Sanford, there's a lot of initiative with the sticker shock program uh for those establishments that sell alcohol. Uh, so we're really deterring uh the sale uh or distribution of alcohol to our, our youth, which is great. Um, and Sanford Junior High School students, I know we're Sanford Middle School now, we're gonna keep calling it Sanford Junior High because that's when uh the, the survey was administered. Um, uh, and Sanford Junior High School responses reflect a lower access, access, accessibility of alcohol compared to the state, uh, the state average of thirty-six percent. Um, so twenty-eight percent of students uh reported a lower access. Um, and then thirty percent of Sanford High School students reported using alcohol before the age of thirteen compared to the state average of twenty-four percent. Um, so what's important to, to look at here is that, and kind of going along with what Caitlin was talking about marijuana, uh, we're really looking at early onset use. Uh, and this is above the state average, so we really want to keep an eye on this. Early onset use is a, a huge indicator and directly linked to adult addiction, uh and that goes for all substances. So we really want to uh pay attention to that. Uh, so I think what, what really is important to know is there's a lot of interventions, prevention work happening in Sanford, um, and addressing this is important. So we want to reach our students at an early age if, if we're, we're starting to see that use climb. Um, so moving on to perception of harm with prescription medications. Again, it's important in, uh, to know that the question asked here is that the prescription were, were prescribed to them. Um, and um, that's important because we didn't want our students to think, you know, because some students do take prescriptions, but we wanted to indicate that it not being prescribed to them. Um, and nineteen percent of Sanford High School students believe uh they would face slight or no risk of harming themselves when using a prescription medication that's not prescribed to them, um, compared to twelve per student, twelve percent of students statewide. Um, and again, as I'll, I'll just reiterate, eighty percent of students did not answer that way. Uh, so that's a positive outlook on that. Um, access to prescription medications, um nineteen percent of Sanford High School students think there's no risk, oh, already talked about that. Um, sixteen percent of high school students statewide report easy access uh to prescription medications. Um, though the number uh is at sixteen percent, um accessibility is uh something we want to keep an eye on and medications we're looking at are listed here, uh oxy, OxyContin, Percocet, Lycatin, codeine. Um, so area concern, so eleven percent, uh, or another area of So 11%, or another area of concern with medications or substance uses. 11% of Sanford High School students reported using inhalants. We did see this increase above the state average of 7%. Inhalants can be used from breathing in contents of aerosol, spray cans. And we don't want to see that number climb from 11, so we're going to keep an eye on that one. And I will hand it off to Nicole Corto.
Thank you. So substance use and the LGBTQ community. LGBTQ questions were a new addition to the MiHos for 2019. This data is not specific to Sanford. It was collected statewide. We believe it's important to advocate for the LGBTQ plus youth as research provided by NAMI Maine indicates that these teens have the highest rates of attempted and completed suicide. And we can provide you with this in further research upon request. So when Sanford High School students were asked during the past 12 months, did you ever feel so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that you stopped doing some usual activities? 40% said yes compared to 32% statewide. This is an increase from the numbers collected in 2017, which was 28%. 34% of Sanford High School students were bullied on school property in the past year compared to 23% of students statewide. This is an increase from the numbers collected in 2017, which was 27%. 58% of Sanford Junior High School students were bullied on school property in the past year compared to 46% of students statewide. This is an increase from 2017, and that number was 48%. And last, 24% of Sanford High School students had seriously thought about killing themselves compared to 16% of students statewide. That is also an increase from the number that was collected in 2017, which was 20%. So ACEs or Adverse Childhood Experiences are potentially traumatic events that occur in childhood from birth to age 17. ACEs have been proven to be linked to chronic health problems, mental illness, substance misuse in adulthood, and can negatively impact education and job opportunities. Unfortunately, about 1 in 5 Maine high school students statewide have experiences 4+ ACEs. So ACEs and substance use. Students with 4+ ACEs are more likely to use harmful substances compared to other students who report less ACEs. 21% of high school students in York County have experienced 4 or more ACEs. And we want to talk about protective factors. These are associated with a lower likelihood of negative outcomes, or in other words, reduce a risk factor's impact. An important way to prevent ACEs and toxic stress is to build protective factors in children. For Sanford High School students, they reported significantly lower rates of most protective factors listed compared to Maine's high school students. Protective factors that were listed included having at least one teacher who really cares about them, having support from adults other than parents, receiving family love and support, having parents talk with them about what they're doing in school frequently, and last, feeling like they matter to their community.
Excellent. Excuse me. To take it back, I kind of wanted to highlight what Partners for Healthier Communities is doing, working with several community partners that have been absolutely terrific, especially in light of COVID-19 and how the world currently is. Right now and in the past, Partners for Healthier Communities, more specifically the Substance Use Prevention Coordinator role, has worked to really educate community members, whether it be school administrators, counseling staff, parents, and youth on Maine-specific data like we're learning about today. The causes, media and marketing strategies that directly target youth. Kind of teaching youth to take a step back and kind of really realize what they're looking at and what kind of message other companies are kind of trying to bar them with. Health effects and especially how support can be found in their community. We provide funding for training opportunities for parents, educators, healthcare providers, really any sector of the community that works closely with youth or believe that they could benefit from any number of these trainings. And those are frequently hosted by the Maine Resilience Building Network, which has been amazing. I'm sure most of you in the school system are familiar with the Student Intervention and Reintegration Program, wish we would finally change that name. But the SERC classes, we have been hosting them virtually, which has been quite the change. But our December class was really successful. So we are keeping with that initiative. I think we are one out of three coalitions in the state that decided to try it virtually, and we've had great success so far. Linking resources. School counselor needs something, a parent is requesting something, a high school student is requesting resources or education, providing them with that. And then educating youth through activities that empower them to make positive choices. Obviously, it's a little challenging right now, but we have done some awesome initiatives with the Sanford High School and middle school students, and we're really hoping to continue that throughout the year. Brent?
Yes, so protective factors. What do we have in our community of Sanford? Well, we have, this is just a, I think, a snippet or a small list of different things going on in our community. And speaking from the school's perspective, I mean, we're utilizing a lot of restorative approaches, particularly with those students using in school and developing plans for them to help them feel supported, connect them with counseling if needed, get them educated through the SERC program that Caitlin just mentioned, and any other healthy connections that we can make for our students, whether that be a sport, a club. What else is happening in our schools is we have our social emotional curriculum that our teachers are implementing in their classrooms. Our school counseling teams at the high school and middle school, and even the elementary schools are providing education and prevention work, such as Red Ribbon Week, Challenge Day, Be the Change initiatives. I know our middle school counselors do an amazing job with awarding students with the Be the Change Award. And it really, we're trying to highlight these kiddos and help them feel good about what they're doing for themselves and their community and their family. And as you can see, there's not only the schools, but our community partners, like Partners for Healthier Communities Strategies, the Sanford Police Department. We have our Backpack Program that feeds a lot of our students and families within the school. I could sit here for a long time and go through what all of you are doing for our community. And what I will say is we're always looking for new partnerships, new initiatives, and new goals to work toward. And this data really drives us to do that. And I'm so glad that we have this information. I would like to get more that's COVID-related and really implement some change there and make adjustments as needed to support our kids and families.
I will leave the contact information is on the screen. Anyone is interested in that.
Yeah, if there's any questions that any of you come up with that maybe aren't addressed here, you can email us. I'm with the school department, so you can probably find me just by calling one of the schools or even Ms. Corto. But yeah, reach out. We'd be glad to get you any information that comes up.
Ask a quick question, Madam Mayor.
You may, Counselor.
So people tend to text us during these meetings, and some of the questions I find interesting as well. And one of the parents asked, what kind of work do you do? And I remember this from my youth. What kind of work do you do to get the adults who are working with the students in the schools to recognize when they themselves are bullying by certain things that they do to students? Or maybe not meaning to, but are doing it anyway? Or supporting the bullying through their actions? And getting them to see that they can't be at the level of kids and they need to, they need to have a better perception of their role and of how they manage, you know, student interaction and their own personal interaction with students?
I'll answer, and then I'm sure, I'm not sure if Brent has his answer as well. Training, resilience training for educators, especially right now. Currently, I'm trying to gather some educators for stress management. You as educators, as adults, we can't, we can't do much for anyone else if you don't, you know, have wellness for ourselves. So I would say training and resiliency, social emotional learning like Brent had mentioned, and really just, again, taking the time to work on themselves as adults, as educators, to be a better adult, to then help that student, if that answers your question.
Not really, because I think, I think adults personally make offhanded comments a lot that is, are completely insensitive. Because I think they're trying to be buddies. I think they're trying to be cool themselves, because some educators are quite young. I mean, I remember, I can throw out some specific circumstances from my youth. And I was a, you know, relatively well-known kid, popular, and still teachers felt that it was okay to say some of the completely rude things that they said. And so, you know, how do we get them, how do we get people who are, who make a larger impact on these kids and don't realize that their words hurt even though they think it's an option?
So if I could just add to that, that our, our schools are really implementing restorative, like I mentioned before, restorative approaches, practicing restorative circles, not only with students, but within the staffs, staff population themselves. So gathering staff together, discussing items such as this. And how do we address ourselves? And then how can we address our students in a better way when that does come up? So I think our administrative teams are doing great with implementing a lot of those restorative circles and education around that, so.
Can I just add something? Two of the things that really struck me by your report, really, it bothers me that so many young, under 13-year-olds are using substances that are just not appropriate. That bothers me. But the other piece is it relates back to the bullying that, what was it? 58% of kids at one of the schools at least said they were bullied while they were at school. And as educators, and I know that must be information that you share with the staff, is it a shock to the staff? Or do they say, well, what are we missing? Are we seeing that? Or are they saying, well, I am not seeing that at all? Because I don't believe that much bullying could go on, that people wouldn't see it. But that, I'm not in the school. So, and especially, you're right, because now we don't know what's been going this whole past year and what will, what the data will show when we come back in, say, in 2022, when you probably do it, because I doubt very much you're going to be doing it in 2021. You're not going to be doing the, collecting any data. So, you know, I mean, as, just as a layperson now with no kids in school or anything, those, that data, it just, it makes me really nervous about where we're headed and that we really have a lot of work to do.
Right. And we have seen, we have seen that increase over the past few years with the bullying. And, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to shift where, where all that's coming from. I don't have evidence. But what we do know is that platforms for social media are growing. Not only, we started with Facebook, but now we have Twitter, we have TikTok, we have Snapchat. I mean, we have all these different platforms where students have access to each other. I know in my day, if I did have bullies and, you know, it was, I didn't have to see that bully over the weekend. Right? I'd go home, I wouldn't have to see him. But come Monday, sure enough, he'd be waiting there. But now they have access to each other 24/7. And that is, that is something, it's hard to police that, right? And it's something we want to continue to educate. And that is implemented in our group work at schools, SEL, you know, appropriate ways to use social media.
All right, Counselor Stackpole, I see that you have your phone, your hand up.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Starkio. Just a quick, quick observation. You know, one of the things that I used to do in education was affirmative action officer for the SAD 57 School District. And as such, so people understand what that is. I, I was an agent of the superintendent when I investigated complaints around sexual harassment, both between adults, staff, and between students, and certainly between adults and students. I quickly, as I became involved in that, zeroed in on the fact that a lot of the, the student, what, using sexual words in interactions was really based, a majority of it was based in bullying. So that bullying was really part of the issue. If you want to call it the center of the target, and then these things begin to expand out from there. And so I, I'm just echoing some of the points that people have made, that I think that adults bear a lot of responsibility for the culture around bullying and as best as we can, you know, to, and I applaud the efforts of working, working with students because first of all, they have to know that that's wrong and what to deal with when they encounter it. But I think the adults certainly have probably a ways to go in this, in this whole situation. That's probably not your issue, but I bring that up for the Greater City Council to speak to. One more thing, and I'll, and I'll be quiet. Along the same lines, I wasn't able to correlate in my head as you went through them. But along the same lines, I'm wondering what the percentage, compare the percentage of students who felt their parents didn't think it was wrong for them to use these substances, or just lump them all together, and the percentage of how many were actually using it. I think that, I'm looking at it roughly, and I think it's pretty close. You know, it might be 25, 30, or something like that. So once again, to emphasize the point here, and this is for the greater community also, if the parents think it's okay, or the kids perceive that the parent thinks it's okay, they're much more likely to get involved in all of these different substances. So with that, I'll let you speak to it, or we can move on, whatever happens.
Thank you for sharing that. And I, just from a prevention standpoint, you're absolutely correct. If parents, you know, if it's known that they think it's, you know, okay to use marijuana, is that going to think twice about starting to use? Probably not. So that's an excellent point that you do bring up, and it is very important.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, you know, those adults that you're referring to and getting them aware of what's happening, right? I'm so glad that we have this data to present not only to you as city council members, but we also present this to all our adults in the school. So we want to, we want to get this information out to all those adults. Because yes, it is, it's our responsibility to, to respond to a lot of what you've indicated as our concerns. So, which is why we're here tonight. We appreciate everyone's feedback. But I also, there was another point you had made, I was going to, the perceptions of harm. I think one thing I do see, and I do, I think I repeat myself at these, but the perception of harm and minimizing the use from the parental perspective. So there have been times I've worked with some parents that will say to me, well, at least they're not using dot, dot, dot. Then they minimize the current use. So trying to redirect that focus to, well, we're here right now. Let's focus on the use that's happening now, and how do we address that? Rather than worrying about them getting there. Let's focus on this. So that minimizing of the use is also something we work with families, you know.
And I think you'd find, working with bullying, and I know that's not what this is about, but this has leaked into our discussion, that the parents think that bullying is okay, and that's why the kids themselves likely are bullies. So I think you'll see the same kind of correlation across, across the board here.
Oh, sure. The harm goes, it aligns both with substances and bullying, yeah. There's harm on both. So thank you all for the work that you're doing.
Thanks, Bob. Counselor Hanselman, you have your hand up.
And just to be brief, I want to thank all three of you for presenting this really important information. And, and, you know, kind of a plug, I guess, but in an answer also to Deputy Mayor's question about adult recognition of, you know, maybe bad behaviors. There is a Challenge Day program that, you know, has been in Sanford for a few years now. And that program is really exceptional in that it connects both students and their teachers in a really personal and meaningful way, where, you know, teachers have a better perspective than they may even have before, as do students, about how we're all real people, you know. you know, and it's really about breaking down barriers and creating connections, and I, I think that that's.
Last two, Anne. Yeah, she froze.
All right, well, that's brought up Challenge Day.
And we share a lot of similarities when we get down to it, and that Challenge Day program is amazing, so if anybody wants more info on that, I'd love to share more sometime, but thank you guys for presenting this info.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay, I really think it's important, I'm so, I'm really happy that you were able to come and present to us this evening. I think that it's, it's, it's one way that we show our, our young people that we, we care about what happens to them, because it shouldn't just be presented to the school committee, I mean, they're part of the whole community, so. And I think that it's important for us to use this information going forward, especially at the beginning of budget season. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely, and I do, last thing I will add is that Partners brought through community just was awarded last week ten thousand dollars from Kenny Bunk Savings Bank to do substance use prevention in Sanford. So hopefully, some good partnerships will come out of that and good projects.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, great, all right. Okay, public participation. I know Diane Connolly wanted to say something. Okay, well, Diane, are you there?
Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Diane, and this is for things that aren't on the agenda, if that's possible?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to request a change to the Stanford City's website. When you go into, look at what's going on with the city, and for those of us who try to keep up and see what's going on, this week in particular, if you had wanted to see what was going on with the land bank, you couldn't, you go into the packet, and there's no information there. You have to be on the Zoom meeting to see that information. And I would request that a change be made, that the land bank share the information as the other subcommittees do, and that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, anybody else on public participation? We don't have any public hearings this evening, and there's nothing on the consent, consent agenda, so we'll go into old business. Twenty dash twenty-two-two-six dash zero-one, ordered to approve a proposed amendment of Chapter two eighty, zoning regarding signage for medical marijuana production facilities, and I think this is the second reading. Is there a motion on the floor?
If we approve?
Second.
Has a, a motion by Councilor Stackpole to approve, and a second by Councilor?
Lanigan.
Lanigan. Okay, presentation, who's going to make this presentation this evening?
Director De La Valley is here, if you'd like her to present a brief memo as far as the change in the standards are concerned.
Councilor Stackpole, this is zoning, so do you want to have the planning director present, or would you prefer the?
I, I think I will defer to the, to the planning director, this is not really a complicated political matter, it's, it's really a business, business-friendly gesture, and I, and I think she'll do a fine job.
Okay, I can't see the planning director on, can somebody? Am I just not seeing it?
I'm here. I'm here, you won't see my face, but I am here, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, I would prefer to see your face, but.
I, I understand, we're working on that. So this item was brought forward from the zoning subcommittee, specifically a request to allow medical marijuana production facilities to have signage that would alert people to their location. Public hearing was held on this, and first reading, it went back to zoning subcommittee to specifically talk about the reference to signage in residential areas. Based upon that conversation, the proposed amendment to that part of the text was eliminated. So the only thing in front of you is the proposed amendment to Section two eighty dash fifteen dash ten point three point six point four, which make it, makes it clear that, that signage can be allowed in conformance with the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act or state administrative rules as appropriate. It's a relatively straightforward change, and simply removes the phrase, the, the prohibition on signage.
And just a, a quick, quick follow-up on this, that the, the rules for signs for medical marijuana businesses are exactly the same as they would be for any business, so that they're, they're aligned with that, and also this came out of the subcommittee with consensus, a hundred percent, the three of us who were there were backing this, backing this motion.
Thank you, Councilor Stackpole, is there anyone else who has any questions?
And may I ask?
Councilor Lanigan?
Yes, I just, I just want to add to, as this, as recently as this weekend, the Portland Press Herald published an article about how the state is actually finally cracking down on their state, you know, rules as far as signage and, you know, marketing to kids and using logos that are favorable, you know, to, to our youth. So it's, it's nice to see there, it wasn't just that one company, but multiple companies have started getting notices, so it makes me feel confident that we are allowing this at the proper time, meaning now that there's state enforcement and good, solid rules around getting this in place, so.
Thank you, Councilor Lanigan. Any other discussion? Have a motion, and a second? There's no other discussion, then I'm going to call roll. Councilor Martel?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Tuttle?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Councilor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Perlehe?
Yes.
And I am also, yes, that is unanimous.
Just one, one quick final thing, Councilor Lanigan did, did bring up graphics, and I think we need to follow up on that, and just say that, that signage does allow for graphics. So as a community, we need to be prepared for that, however, there are also state regulations that regulate the graphics, and I think this is what Councilor Lanigan was referring to, so that they are, well, just call it age-appropriate and otherwise appropriate for community use.
Thank you, Councilor Stackpole. We will go on to twenty dash two-zero-six dash zero-one, Amendment to Chapter two eighty, Zoning and Land Use Table Regarding Mental Health. This is also a second reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Hanselman with the second. Okay, who's going to present this?
Well, again, I, I would defer to, to Ms. De La Valley, again, to talk about the differences, specifically between what we looked at in first reading and second reading.
Thank you.
A concern was raised about mental health and the initial proposal, which would have changed the definition of mental health and abuse clinics. And so the city manager, the code enforcement director, and I stepped back and came up with an alternative approach, which was to leave the current regulations in place about mental health and abuse clinics, and to define a new land use, which more closely tracked with what was being proposed, that motivated us starting to work on this. And that new land use is called a mental health practitioner office. And the definition comes straight out of the Nash, the Nat, North American Industrial Classification System, essentially noting that practitioners, that these would be the offices of practitioners engaged in the diagnosis and treatment of mental, emotional, and behavioral disorders, and/or the diagnosis and treatment of individuals or groups that had social dysfunction brought on by mental illness, it could include drug abuse, substance abuse, physical and emotional trauma. And then, then we added the additional sentence that practitioners who operate these offices will not be allowed to directly dispense medication at the office, although they might write a prescription that could be filed, filled at another location, such as a pharmacy. So that was the substance of the text change, is also a slight correction to a citation, nothing terribly significant. And then, if you look at the proposed changes to the land use table, and Steve, I'm hoping you might pull that up as well, you'll see that it basically calls for inserting a new number twenty-five, a mental health practitioner office. It would be proposed to be permitted in the urban industrial business, airport development, and IR zones, as other medical offices and counseling offices are allowed. It then would involve renumbering the uses in that category consecutively after that. And then, under the general definition of healthcare and social assistance, it was a clarification that if there's going to be a, any type of residential treatment facility, that it would only be allowed as a conditional use, it wouldn't be an outright permitted use. And that's pretty much it. Mr. Charity, you want to finish up on what happened to the subcommittee?
So, let, let me just chime in for, for just a second here, and for the, for the, for the people who are, are listening, the community at large, and, and other, other counselors, what this, what this new definition is, it, it, it essentially takes the, this business and makes it following the, it's like a doctor's office, okay? So I think we need to flush out of our minds the, the thoughts of methadone clinics and things like that, and, and so on. It's essentially defines this as a doctor's office, and after extensive discussion, which we had with, with Mr. Chaney and others, I feel very comfortable that this is not going to have any more impact on our community, in fact, a, a negative impact, let's say, or a physical impact than just putting, having another doctor's office here. The positive impact, which is why I felt that I misspoke, could be a significant positive impact in helping this community with substance abuse issues, helping individuals who have issues with substance abuse. So I, I hope that, that clears it up a little bit, but certainly we can answer, try to answer more questions.
Does anyone else from the subcommittee want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, quick comment, I'm, I, I apologize, I had to go talk to someone real quick, but did we talk about the fact that the, the in, impatient was not going to be allowed in the downtowns? Does that take? Okay, thank you. That's my only comment. That was the one.
Councilor Hanselman, did you have anything that you'd like to add?
I want to clarify, because I wanted to ask that question, Deputy Mayor, it, it's conditional use, was that the intent? Because I, I misunderstood it to not be conditional use, but actually prohibited.
It was supposed to be prohibited in the downtown sections, but she was supposed to allow it in the overlay, and the conditional use was in general, I thought the conditional use was generally, and the exclusion was the two downtowns.
Did I miss hear that, Beth?
Actually, no, it, it's not carried through in the language in front of you, though it certainly can be put in there. I think probably what you want to do is make a, an amendment to the land use table, and make it clear that it's conditional use for six-two-three-two-two, and, and essentially, what would happen is, we would just take the language that you see currently in the box under the urban zone, and that would actually get moved over to the urban overlay zone for at least the first portion of it, the CU four-six-two-three-two-two.
Madam Mayor, can I just interrupt just a second, Beth, because that is like mud? So I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna say one thing, if we're going to have an amendment to this motion that's on the table, and to this particular proposal, zoning amendment, then I want it to be really clear what we're doing, and I don't want it to be about all the numbers, I just want it, if, it needs to, to, to reflect what the subcommittee thought they were proposing. So, maybe the city manager can help out, but I just don't want to have all, I want to be really clear, we have a motion on the table, I will need an amendment to this motion, I want to be really clear what it is.
Madam Mayor, we were very clear at subcommittee, very clear at subcommittee, that the impatient was not to be in the downtowns, that it was only, and it was not, it wasn't a conditional use we were talking about, it was an exclusion, so I'm actually surprised, and I'm sorry again that I missed a segment of this, I'm actually surprised this isn't correctly presented this evening.
So do I, Councilor Stackpole, do you have something that you'd like to add?
Not at this point, I was fishing for a, an amendment motion, but I think you've, you've been clear on what you're looking for, and I agree.
I'm gonna make a motion to table, if I could, Madam Mayor.
You know, now, is there a second to that motion? Wait a minute, we can't discuss a motion to table, let me just, you made a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I'm not going to say anything, but.
Madam Mayor, I, I guess.
No, we can't discuss, we have a motion.
We can't discuss a motion to table.
Sorry.
No, debatable.
If we want to discuss further, we have to defeat this motion, okay? I'm gonna call the roll. This is on the motion to table. Councilor Martel?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
No.
Councilor Tuttle?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
No.
Councilor Lanigan?
Yes.
Councilor, I'm a Deputy Mayor Perlehe?
No.
And I vote no, that motion fails. So let's go back to discussing, because I think we're in a really good place, I think the zoning committee did a great job, I'm just concerned about this amendment, I think it's pretty simple, maybe Steve, do you have a suggestion on an amendment that would satisfy this?
No, no, from my understanding, the conditional use was a, was a point of clarification, if that's the element, you can remove that conditional use from, from the land use table, and move forward with all other amendments.
Okay, so the, the amendment would be to, to, to remove that?
So basically, and I want to make sure what we're doing, because I want to make sure the regular office can go through this evening, and basically, I don't, no conditional use, and it's not permitted, is the residential. That's what I wanted, I want to make sure, and I want to be very clear, so I can look back at this meeting and know this is what I, what the subcommittee intended when we had our meeting, was that there was going to be no permission in the downtown areas for residential, at all.
Okay, so what is the motion for the amendment? Because we have to vote on that one first.
I'll make a motion that, is it six-two-three-two-two is the residential?
No, do it the way that Steve, Steve had the proper language.
I, I am, I'm trying to make sure that it's only the residential that's being impacted. Is it six-two-three-two-two that's the residential designation?
Beth, do you have the ability to reference that in the next quote?
Yes, I think that the, the simple thing would be to simply strike the phrase, except CU for six-two-three-two-two.
But that would permit it, correct?
No, 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 it, it still will say, okay, so you can say, all P except six-two-three-two-two is prohibited.
That's fine with me.
So is that a motion, Council Perlehe?
Uh, that, my motion would be that all permitted, except six-two, six-two-three-two-two is not permitted, and if they want to fix that. And if they want to fix that, make it, uh, uh, urban overlay, they're gonna have to do that at a different meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stackpole. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we're gonna just be voting on the amendment right now. Councilor Martel?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Tuttle?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Councilor Lanigan?
I, no.
Deputy Mayor Hurlahey?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, that is a six-to-one vote in favor of the amendment. Now we're going to the, the, uh, original motion that includes the amendment now. Is there any more discussion on this?
Madam Mayor?
Councilor Lanigan?
So I, I think this just brings home the point that we need to make sure that we're getting stuff out of subcommittee to us. I, I, the reason I'm voting no is, is I, I feel like I read the information I had in front of me, and I was prepared to vote a certain way based on what I had, and now it's changing, and I don't have the background that the subcommittee had. Um, so it's, it's just, I, I just wanted to clarify that, but also kind of, it, it seems like it's, it's happened a couple times lately, and I know that our job in the subcommittees to prevent this being, uh, sort of a, I don't know, discombobulated mess here in front of the council, is, is to do our work at the subcommittee level, so when it comes to the council, we can clearly vote on a clear thing. And I just, I just want to say that before we vote.
And, wait, let me just, wait, Mara, Councilor Hurlahey, let me just say something. Councilor Lanigan, I can understand, but this is exactly what should happen, because the subcommittee did their work, they thought it was gonna come through a certain way, they caught it, I think it actually, the, the subcommittee process actually worked in this case, because that it was caught, we discussed it, we had an open discussion about it with the whole council, and I honestly feel like we're in a pretty good place here, so that's why I would felt comfortable voting no on the table in motion.
Okay, so what, can, so, want to explain to me then, what six-two-three-two-two is then? Because I'm voting on something that I have no clear understanding of.
That's fine, so we're having a discussion now.
Can I answer that? But first of all...
Yes, you may, Counselor, Deputy Mayor.
I'd like to, I'd like to apologize, Luke, because I should have caught it before we even got to the meeting, and I, I do apologize, because at the, at the meeting that we had on zoning, we were very good with the, uh, office in the downtown, in the downtown and throughout the urban area, and when it came to residential living, we, we specifically said we do not want it allowed in the two downtowns. Because, you know, we wouldn't want, um, a residential ser, um, right in the middle, across the street from your, you know, from the Midtown Mall, right in the heart of the downtown, that's, we really want to get businesses there that are encouraging shopping and basketball. We were very clear, we didn't want it in the two downtowns, I should have picked up on this before the meeting this evening and asked for a correction, I, I apologize for that, but it was an easy fix. So basically, when we say that it's six-two-three-two-two is not allowed in the urban zone, um, because the overlay was not done, and that it was correctly the way we asked, which means it would have been allowed in the urban, except, um, in, not in the downtowns, if it's in urban overlay, it means not in the downtowns. So if this had been correctly done, it would have been eliminated from the downtowns, but allowed in the urban. But since it was incorrectly done, we're just gonna exclude it completely from the urban and correct it at a later date.
Okay, I just know how sensitive this is, thank you so much.
I totally agree, but I, I feel comfortable excluding it for now and correcting it at a later date.
I trust your judgment, thank you.
And can I just thank the zoning committee for taking something that I listened to the meeting in December that was rather confusing and contentious, and we solved the problem, and it, and there's nothing that wouldn't already been going on in that building, going to be going on in that building again. So, is there anybody that had, before we, um, we haven't voted, right? Before we vote on the final motion, is there any other discussion?
Okay, so, I'm still a little bit...
Councilor Martel?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused about this. Um, so this is excluding, um, a, like a methadone clinic type of place from the urban zone, is that correct?
An in-house, like, so if, uh, you wanted a, um, homeless teen shelter in the downtown, or, that can't be in the downtown, but could, it, it could be in the, like, we wanted it to be allowed in the urban area, but not the downtowns.
I don't think that was the question, though. Wasn't your question around, around...
Well, I'm trying, I'm, I think I'm a little bit still confused as to what exactly I'm looking at here. I've got all these acronyms and no definitions, um, six-two-three-two-two is not defined, um...
Madam Mayor, may I provide the definition?
Thank you, Councilor Hanselman, I would be glad to let you do so as a member of the zoning subcommittee, thank you.
So it's a, N A, N A I C S, um, code, and it's a residential, mental retardation, mental health, and substance abuse facility, uh, essentially, so primarily engaged in providing residential care. And so that, that's the big, um, piece, it's of concern is the residential care. Um, I, and I personally will ask to see it, amendment to how, have it be allowed in the urban zone, I think that's an important allowance down the road, but as of this moment, um, I understand why we can't do that, so, does that help at all, Councilor Martel?
Okay, so we're basically not changing anything right now, that'll be later on.
No. Well, we're disallowing it more broadly than we intended at the original, um, zoning in order to, to get this, um, the amendment, you know, the, to pass what we have in front of us tonight, and then we'll have to come back to increase it if we want it in the urban zone.
And where is it currently allowed?
Uh, an office will be, but not a place that distributes methadone.
Okay.
So if someone needed to go see their, their, um, their counselor, that's gonna be allowed, but then stripped from there, they'd have to take the script and go to the pharmacy.
Okay.
Which is, to be fair, which is no different than what is allowed now, if it was, if, if it had been Dr. Frank's office and they wanted to do counseling and give prescriptions for medicines, oh wait, that's what they were doing.
Right.
You know, and so it's, it's essentially the same use.
Yeah. Can I just add something, Madam Mayor?
Yes, you may, Counselor.
Thank you so much. And, and Counselor Martel, I, I think the big thing was, uh, the distribution of, uh, like, suboxone and methadone, and that won't be here, this is just like having a NAS on healthcare, good old, you know, or, or Southern Maine campus somewhere in town, it's just allowing it down there now. I'm just understanding it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, and I think we've finished discussing, have we? Then I will call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlahey?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, and that is a unanimous vote. For, just for clarification, um, Counselor Lanigan, um, I appreciate, um, table in motions, but sometimes I feel like I want to finish the discussion, and a lot of people don't realize that when you make a table in motion, we can have no further discussion. So I voted against that, just because I wanted to have, I wanted to complete our discussion and not put it off to another day. So I hope you appreciate that, it was nothing personal.
No, I do, and I, and I sorry, I didn't want to throw, I, I didn't want to end the discussion, but I had already made the motion, so I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, we have finished with, we're still in old business, guys, let's, so nineteen-seven-four-six-dash-zero-one, update on the fire station feasibility committee, and I'm gonna turn this over to Steve.
Thank you, uh, this is on here this evening because we're getting ready to activate the fire station feasibility study committee. Uh, it's been quite an extended period of time, uh, the council actually appointed and set up the committee back in February of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the committee is specifically, uh, has a specific composition, composition, um, that was formed, uh, as far as background, willingness, and ability to contribute towards the conversation. This is set up as a parallel system, not different than what was taking place for the Sanford High School, when that was, uh, viewed to set up a, uh, academic career technical education environment, different educational program, designing the facility around that, and then finding the appropriate site to do that, uh, you know, the need was established, finding the site, moving to the current construction and occ, and occupation as we have there currently. Fire station, uh, review committee will meet for the first time, I had two different dates here, but it's gonna be this coming Wednes, Wednesday, January twentieth, they'll meet for the first time. They're gonna be going over, they're gonna do a tour of the three stations, uh, there'll be a tour of the Springvale Station starting out, followed by a tour of the Central Station, and then followed by a tour of South Station. What will be looked at there is, uh, the first item on here is a, an examination of the existing conditions and needs, the city commissioned an engineered study on that, so the, uh, working group has been provided the, that examination of existing conditions as well as a pre-feasibility study, but in order to truly talk about that, uh, intelligently, one needs to have a tour of the pre-existing facilities. After this initial tour, uh, they, they will start, the committee will start its work discussing the existing conditions, uh, as set forward in the engineered study, as well as on their, uh, own observations. During the tour, we'll also be talking about the pre-feasibility study, uh, which is actually the, the administration and the city council has been working off that since two thousand and sixteen. That gets into the type and number of, uh, staff to appropriately, uh, facilitate the city's fire and EMS services, it gets into the operational aspects, it gets into the type and number of apparatus, and the city has greatly amended the type and number of apparatus over the period of time following that study, eliminating about three and a half million dollars of backlog, uh, depreciation in the portfolio of our capital improvements program, by going to a quint apparatus as opposed to a singular ladder truck and a singular tanker truck. The quint is a combination of the two. Um, buying a used, uh, rescue, uh, rescue unit and a whole host of other creative elements. As the committee works on those two elements, the examination of existing conditions and the pre-feasib, pre-feasibility study, uh, they will be working through the recognition that came out of the pre-feasibility, excuse me, uh, to shift from a three-station concept in the community down to a two-station concept, uh, if that's fully supported, uh, the two stations need to be specifically cited, that's the third element on here, it's a review of the citing of the facility in order to maintain the city's ISO ratings. So the, from three stations down to two was a main, uh, staffing of the apparatus, it reduces the number of, uh, people that you need, uh, overall. It also reduces the number of facilities, which, uh, improves the long-term ownership and maintenance costs as far as facilities are concerned. So by reducing from three to two, there's a specific radii in which both of these two facilities need to be located, so the committee will be looking at, uh, how and where those, those, uh, two stations could be cited. Want to narrow down on specific sites, uh, the city's already engaged of the pre-engineered, pre-engineering of the facilities themselves, it's called the stacking analysis, when you look at the fire metrics, uh, that are associated with the operation of a modern facilities that addresses your, uh, Title VII and Title IX, the ADA compliance separation of contamination and versus non-contamination to, uh, significantly reduce the cancer occurrence that's relevant within the firefighting industry. Stacking analysis takes all of the fire metric components that need to take place for these future stations, it compartmentalizes those into basically, think of them as building blocks, those building blocks, uh, will be examined by the working group as far as the need or necessity for each of the various blocks, what can be, um, engineered in or out as far as the need, relevant to the stacking analysis, uh, think of it as value engineering that was done, not different than when the high school was being designed, it was value engineered to get it down to the most cost-effective while still retaining all of the most critical elements in there. That stacking analysis, stacking analysis will then move those blocks around on any facility that might be chosen, and they'll, they'll examine as to whether you can get a single-story versus a multi-story building, cost-effectiveness of, of, uh, those two elements. If and only if all of those elements are finally supported by the working group, then we get into the financial analysis and debt service piece, uh, but you need to solve and, and gain support and recommendation to move forward on all of the other elements before you finally get down to the fiscal ability of the community to pay for these improvements. Uh, there is an engineered cost for each of, each of the two facilities, there is an escalator that's placed on there for, uh, the number of years that you delay in building these, uh, and what, what happens to that cost, and that can be updated on an ongoing and annual basis. If all of that is ferreted out, uh, and is recommended by the committee and the council continues to support that based upon that recommendation and the city council's independent work on this as might, might be, uh, obtained, then and only then it would be proposed for a public education campaign to move forward under the public referendum process, or some point in the future for a referendum vote, uh, typically that would be at a November, uh, referendum ballot process. So in there, uh, the first elements, uh, just skim over these briefly, the Sanford Fire Department Existing Conditions and Functional Assessment Study that's been disseminated to the working group at this point in time, looks at the architectural and structural elements of our pre-existing facilities, it looks at the code compliance, fire metric design, or the lack in code compliance and the lack of fire metric design, it looks at the ADA and life safety elements within the current facilities, and it compares the standards and guidelines, uh, for facilities, uh, that we have currently versus what, uh, is required as of today. The second attachment, as I earlier referenced, is the Fire Department Operational and Facility Study, again, this was commissioned in two thousand and sixteen, it has been the blueprint that we've moved forward from that point in time, uh, the committee has referenced, uh, uh, spurred down to specific pages in there as being the most important elements, but during the tour, when they're looking at the pre-existing conditions of all three of the stations, we'll talk about those elements under the pre-feasibility study that the city's been able to, uh, perfect absent the construction of new facilities, by making amendments to current facilities, by making changes to the type and number of apparatus, and the type and number of staff, uh, that is on board as far as the operation and the perfection of services. So at the, uh, end of the day, the Fire Station Feasibility Study Committee starts its work next week, uh, and I'm asking at this point in time if the city council is going to make any changes to the composition of that, uh, seven-person committee.
Um, Steve, I, I, there was some confusion about the counselors that are on that, and I'm pretty sure it is Counselor Lanigan, the Deputy Mayor, and myself. That, what we had?
Uh, I had it as, uh, yourself, uh, Counselor Hanselman, and Counselor Lanigan.
Was it, was that right? Yeah, and I'm sorry if I, I was wrong, is it?
Yeah, I, I don't hold if, I, I, if, uh, Deputy Mayor would like to be on that committee, I don't...
Oh, no, she doesn't want to be, I just didn't, wasn't sure, because I couldn't remember, so you're, oh, that's perfect, I'm fine with this.
Public safety, I think it's a completely appropriate.
Yeah, so public safety was, was live.
So, the only change is that there was a citizen member that has declined, who had said they would and they aren't, so are you going to find someone to replace that person?
Uh, we will, um, Larissa, can you tell me again who, who the, uh, person that declined is?
Um, Arlene Fortier, um, came back and said that she thought the time commitment...
Okay, so pursuant to the council's prior, uh, recognition, they wanted to have a realtor on there for obvious reasons, for, you know, land location and development, uh, future acquisition and recommendations around that, so, uh, unless there's a change in the thought process, we would seek out another qualified realtor to, uh, be part of that process.
But these names that are up here are not the names that I saw, I saw Sean Sullivan, I saw Becky Brink, um, and I didn't see, um, John Rue unless I missed it, and I didn't see Lionel Seventy.
No, these, these were the original, uh, named, the, the, we're, we're seeking to get the positions filled, these, this is from the, uh, prior letter that went out to the council at the time that it was originally formed, so these aren't the names that we have currently, the developer, uh, is Steve DuMont from E P D Construction.
Yep.
Uh, school representation, school board committee and such is now, uh, Becky Brink, need to find a replacement for the realtor, Arlene Fortier, and, um, the Sean Sullivan, the category that was for public relations and dissemination of information.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood who the people were, um, and if there's any changes, we'll make sure everyone knows about it, okay?
Madam Mayor?
Um, yes, Counselor.
Sorry, uh, I, I, I appreciate Becky Brink's, uh, school department background for sure, but do we want an active school person, or... Or I guess I just want to make sure the intent with that. Being that she's not actually.
I yeah, I don't I never suggested that. That was just on the list.
Okay.
Need to be a school committee member? I mean, it's a fire station.
I don't think. No, I I'm fine with that. I just thought he said it was a school department member.
Oh, no, no, I think it was somebody who had been involved in the process that we used in building the school.
Got it. Thank you.
And I think that that is that's where that came from. Okay. So and I asked that this come because I just thought that since we had two new members that maybe the council should all as a whole understand where we were going. This is not going to be a quick process. I think we all realize that, but we need to begin. Um, so do we need a vote on this at all, Steve?
Uh, no, provided you're okay with the current structure and the individuals, we we need to, we'll reach out and identify a willing realtor. We have a couple in mind that we probably could could request and report back to you at that point in time as.
That would be great.
We're able to locate.
Okay. So are there any more questions or comments from any counselors?
Well, Madam Mayor, I had a question of who's you're going to be on it and.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yeah.
And Counselor Lanigan.
Good choice.
Okay. All right. So let's go if no nothing else, we'll just go on to the next item. Thank you, Steve.
Welcome.
Twenty-one dash seven dash zero one, ordered to review and adopt the city council rules of procedure for two thousand and twenty-one pursuant to section two one three of the Sanford City Charter. If you all remember at the last meeting, I convened a special subcommittee just to look at this. It was I was on it, the Deputy Mayor and Counselor Stackpole. Am I right about that? I'm trying to remember who did this again.
It was.
It's been a long time.
It was Bob, right?
Yeah. So, um, and we took a while, and I think we came up with something that addresses the concerns that we had around Zoom meetings. I'm assuming everyone read it. Steve, do you mind just kind and I cannot read it from this distance, so the important points for both counselors and staff, pretty much the same thing, that we need to approximate a public meeting as much as possible even when we're on Zoom going forward.
Yep. So my interpretation is this amendment to section six of the current council rules of procedure is that it sets us up not only for our current COVID situation being all remote meetings via what they call a Zoom Zoom meeting, which is technically a telephony conference format, it sets us up for the future meetings that would would allow for individuals to be back here in the council chambers, meeting in person, but also having the multimedia format of Zoom, live stream, live streaming on Town Hall video, the YouTube platform, as well as simulcast on the cable TV networks here for the city. So subsection six has been now re-titled multimedia presentation of city council meetings, workshops, and or related meetings. It sets up the the format for meetings shall be multimedia format to include live broadcast on public access channels, live streamed over the internet, and shall incorporate a video telephony platform, which for us is Zoom, allowing the public participation by remote connection. So when we go live in the council chambers again, equipment has been purchased, we're still working on the installation of that, whereby if you are a member of the public and and you can't or you either can't or you choose not to come to the live council meeting, you can still zoom in, no different than you're doing now. The council will be able to hear you and interact with you via the equipment that's in the chambers, and that will be multi that will be multicast on the various streaming mechanisms that we have. Um, and then so that's for regular council meetings. For for all other workshops, it's left at this this, it states that all other city council meetings or workshops may be televised at the discretion of the mayor after discussion with the council, but will incorporate a video telephony platform for public participation pursuant to Title One MRSA subsection four oh three. Uh, so I'm not exactly sure where the legislature will go as far as doing full Zoom broadcast in the future, uh, but nonetheless, the city council is setting themselves up for for whatever the legislature does, that you'll be able to do the multimedia format going forward in the future. The next aspects of the rules of virtual public meetings really revolves around how to appropriately, the the city council wants to conduct the Zoom meetings themselves, as well as the presentation of materials, so not dissimilar than what is being done here tonight. You're talking about materials that will be put up onto the screen so the public can see them at home. There's the elements in here about the public attendees and what they can and cannot do. It's the ability to provide for public comment that's in here. And then there's also the rules of procedure as far as executive session whereby administratively we'll set those meetings up to allow the public to come in for the public portions of the executive executive session. Anybody that's not qualified or to be part of that executive session can be put into a waiting room, uh, and then we can, when the council is ready, if they're ready to come out of executive session and make any motions, we can bring members out of the meeting room so that they can be part of that. And then there is also the best practices that was not incorporated as part of the rules of procedure, but is envisioned to give guidance to individuals, members of the public, as well as committee members, the counselors, and anybody that's coming into a Zoom type of format. Best practices, and this envisioned that this will be adopted by the city council, will be propagated to all subcommittees and or council-appointed committees, either by charter or by other naming, and that that will also be made available on the city's website to aid people in using this new technology-based platform.
And can I just add that one of the goals that we had when we started the discussion of what we wanted to do with the procedure was to increase access, increase our transparency, make it easier for people, even virtually. They don't have to come to a meeting. In fact, they can't come to a meeting right now, but we wanted it, you you could decide, we wanted it both in the school side and the city side, that if there was a meeting going on, that you should be able to click on that meeting, even if you decided two minutes before, or even in the middle of the meeting that you wanted to attend. So, um, we did, we ran this all by the school committee as well. And this this, I mean, you need to read it, but it's really critical that when we're participating in a meeting, it's why I've been kind of bugging everybody about having their face on there, because I think the people that we serve in this community deserve to see us. Now, we don't have a motion on the table, so and I apologize for not asking for one ahead of time because it could have just been a motion to discuss, but I'll let the discussion go on if we need it, and then we'll and then I'll ask for a motion.
Madam Mayor, if it's an order.
Yes, Counselor, is this Counselor Tuttle?
It is. Madam Mayor, if it's an order, could I make a motion to approve as written?
You could.
I saw move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. So let's have any more discussion. Did Counselor Martel have something that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I I had a quick question, um, around the broadcast, our, I didn't get a chance to look at our our current rules, but are we required to be broadcasting in some manner? Um, because this new one, it says, um, basically that it it doesn't matter whether we do it or we don't.
Well, I think it does say that we will. We we're crossing out the televising because we're not going to do just televising.
I think maybe he's talking about the workshops could be or couldn't be. He's the workshop center.
Workshops were always at the workshops were always at the purview of the chair.
Yep. If you go to the first paragraph, that was the red text there, um, I should scroll back up, uh, let's see.
All regular city council meetings.
Yeah, so all failure to televise, can you stop moving, please? Failure to televise or record any meeting shall not affect the validity of actions taken at the meeting.
That just means that if some technic techno technological thing happens and we have a meeting, just because we weren't able to televise or or do that, it didn't mean that the actions that we took at the meeting weren't weren't still in effect.
Right.
It's a safe. You know, to just because you never know what's going to happen. The power goes out, we keep our meeting going.
Yeah, you never know. Um, okay.
We've been there. We had a when we had something, a little, we had to all leave the building for some reason. I can't even remember what it was for. An earthquake, we had an earthquake.
Madam Mayor, it was an earthquake, yeah. It was an earthquake.
We've had some fun times in that city hall.
Oh, you have a meeting, huh?
Oh, yeah.
My mother-in-law left, but my father-in-law stayed in Marie.
Yeah, well, I said something I shouldn't have said on on television, so.
Yes, you did.
And I didn't even remember, no, I said it. Oh, well, okay. So any other questions or discussion about the proposed change? Counselor Hanselman?
Just really quickly, I appreciate all of this. Does it mean this mean that the school department will share their Zoom link in advance of their meetings? Because that's that's been something I noticed hasn't been happening.
It absolutely does.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Um, yes, Diane Connolly.
Yeah, I have a question as a member of the public, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, for those of us that are not tech savvy, that may be on different committees, would the city entertain, um, pushing some information to those committees in regards to, let's say, web cameras, how to access them on the iPads, um, that we may not be privy to that information, that we were not given booklets with the iPads?
Well, actually, I'm hoping and I'm expecting that there should be, if you were given an iPad, we were having virtual meetings and Zoom meetings, that you would have had, they would have provided the training, even if they have to, because they could definitely do that. As we know, there are some of us on right now who were meophies in the beginning, and we've all learned how to do it, and that would it this this procedure, this these rules of procedure mean that that will be coming because you will have to be on the planning board with your face up there, Diane.
Yeah, I have a.
Make sure you get the education that you need, and I think you have an iPad that's provided by the city.
Yes, I just don't know how to run with the webcam with it because we were not given information about that. Um, it's a different, it's an Apple, and I'm used to Windows, so I'm not sure what to do with it at the moment.
It's actually even easier because I had to switch back to the to Adele, and I had a hard time getting used to it, Diane. So I promise you, we will provide the education that everyone needs to 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 do this the way that it needs to be now.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, right, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Tuttle.
I can identify with with Diane. What I did, I called the Counselor Hanselman, and she's really helped me out a lot. So hope for me, there's hope for anybody, Diane.
Well, we have some able, some really good tech people in in City Hall who can help too. It's amazing what you can do over the phone, but I'm sure I think that there's a a need for some education in this area, and I think we will we will make sure that that happens. Steve, do you have anything else to say about this, what what Diane was saying?
We can we can easily do a Zoom, uh, training session. We can bring in Ben Ben Gore probably is our best person to do that. We can do a Zoom training for people that are learning live on on how to get everything activated. Uh, once, once, once it's activated, it's a very simple process to go forward. Um, aside from that, a wise man working on the farm with me one day taught me that, Steve, you can fix almost anything with a pair of pliers and a hammer. Most days, you don't need the pliers. So if we can't Zoom train you, we'll send you hammers.
Okay.
Sound tape.
All right, Diane, don't get nervous. It'll be okay. It'll be so much better.
I've been trying to understand it, going through Google. I'm just not getting it. Thank you very much.
Okay. So Steve, I I just want to say upfront in front of everybody that's listening that this is critically important, and whatever education we have to do, we have to figure out how to do it, even if we have to bring some of these people in one at a time and sit them down and let them do it, and I know, you know, properly distanced and everything. I don't mean bring the whole planning board in. I mean, for people who are unable to do this, we it's just critically important to the work that we're trying to do. All right. Any more discussion because I'm going to call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That is a unanimous vote. Rules are adopted. Okay, we are into new business. Twenty-one dash twenty dash zero one, ordered to appropriate to the Southern Maine Snow Gores Snowmobile Club, the funds received on a yearly basis from the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, which originates from registration of snowmobiles in the city of Stanford, County of York, for the purpose of buying equipment and maintaining trails. Do I have a motion?
Oh, move, Madam Mayor.
That is a motion by Counselor Tuttle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. City Manager Buck?
Yes, I believe we have a member of the snowmobile club here tonight that might want to speak on behalf and support this. Uh, this is a request to have the fees passed back to the club for the use of trail maintenance.
It's pretty standard, right?
Absolutely. Yes, it is.
Okay. Anybody that wants to speak to this? I don't hear anybody jumping up. All right. We're going to move on to the vote. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, and that is a unanimous vote. Motion passes. Okay. That was easy. Twenty-one dash twenty-one dash zero one, ordered to approve and authorize the city manager to sign lease amendment number one between city of Sanford and Pilot's Cove Cafe, and I will turn that, can we have a motion first?
Oh, move, Madam Mayor.
Okay, a motion by Counselor Tuttle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. Turn it over to, I think, the airport manager?
Yes.
Hello, Allison.
I'm Allison Nappia. I'm the airport manager of the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. I'm pleased to bring before you tonight the request to approve Amendment Number One for the operating rights agreement with Pilot's Cove Cafe. Pilot's Cove is the on-airport restaurant. They're located in the terminal building at one ninety-nine Airport Road in South Stanford, and through their operation over the last almost two years now and their two summer seasons, um, they've grown to really appreciate the outdoor space that they have there. And I've been approached by the owner, Daniel Bowden, who's also on the call tonight and will be able to answer any questions that you might have about making a more permanent structure in that area to be able to out enjoy this outdoors area even more. So this would result in one thousand six hundred and five additional square feet of leasehold. Um, this is three thousand two hundred and ten dollars additionally for the airport and their operating budget each year, right in line with our one of our goals and our business plan of maintaining and fostering that financial self-sufficiency so that the airport doesn't have to rely on any taxation to operate. So bunch of mutual benefits with this. It really fosters that community benefit to have the public involved at the airport and be able to have a good spot to sit outside, both for anybody from the public that wants to enjoy it, as well as anyone who wants to patronize Pilot's Cove Cafe as well. So the structure itself is approximately twenty-five feet by fifty feet, um, and that will be situated right in that leasehold. The patio will still remain open to the public, and there will be public access to that at any time, whether it's during operating hours or outside those operating hours. Few other things that are part of this lease amendment while while we're in there tweaking things. One is that also through the last couple of years of operation, um, they're looking to amend their operating hours so that there isn't just one standard amount per week for the whole year. They want to go to a seasonal minimum requirement. Um, so there's a high season and a low season, as we know in this area, so they're wanting to match that. A couple of things to note about that. One is that it is just a minimum. So in the past, they have, you know, barring any kind of pandemic in the future, had more hours than what was required. The other thing is too that these are just service hours. So these are just the hours that they're open for people to come in and sit and eat. They also do other services and offer the use of the space for private events. Um, they had a hosted a retirement party for actually one of the Sanford Police Department. Um, they had a, hosted a retirement party for actually one of the Sanford Police Department, um, just this past weekend. So, they do all sorts of things like that, and then that's for the indoor space, and people would also be able to, um, do private events in the pavilion if they would like to. And then they also are the main contract for interplane catering for jets and private traffic at the Portland Jet Fort and at the P's International Trade Port. So, just because they're not open for in-flight or, uh, in, seating in there to dine, they are still open, um, and working on, on a lot of different things in there. So, just wanted to note that. Couple of other things that are in the lease amendment as well. One is that it allows live music. Um, it had allowed it before, but it just had the word unamplified in there. Um, so that just modifies that, just to allow live music out on the patio, and just cleans up a couple of things within the notices and demands for contact information and how you feel about that. So, that's what we're looking for here, really looking forward to, um, encouraging some business development in Sanford and again at the airport. And as I said, I think Daniel's still on the line, just in case anybody has any questions for him.
Thank you, Allison. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Comments?
Good job, Allison.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Yes, Counselor Hanselman?
Just a point of, one, this is super exciting. I love it. Um, two, a point of clarification, the estimate of improvement cost of $45,000. I assume that's incurred by the leasee, correct?
Correct, yep.
Thanks.
To build destruction.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Great thing.
Anything else? Hey, let's, let's, all the roll. We have a motion on the table. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yeah, yes.
And I am also a yes. That is a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Allison, and thank you, Mr. Bowden.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Um, twenty-one dash one nine dash zero one. Ordered to approve new bylaws for the Sanford Trails and Urban Forestry Committee. I, do I have a motion?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
That is Counselor Tuttle? With the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. Um, this was, I'll just, I, I think I can handle this one. This just came before the, um, trying to think what committee it came before. I know it was the one that I was doing, and we decide, and we, we made one little correction. Must have been Municipal Operations, right, Maura?
Yeah.
One.
And, um, we just asked to change how their meetings, like the committee. The only addition we made to what their suggestions were, that the committee shall follow any rules or regulations promulgated by the city council regarding access to meetings by the public. But, um, the city manager assured us that they don't have to follow, they, they, they are kind of a different, they're an advisory committee. They're not an appointed committee in the same way that other committees are. So, they've been meeting by Zoom, and, um, I assume that as soon as they can all get together, they'd rather do that. Um, does anybody have any comments before we vote?
No.
I think Mr. Furbish does.
Oh, Mr. Furbish, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine. It's, um, yeah, real quickly, thank you very much. We, we added the sentence that you wanted. I hadn't seen your rules and regulations at the time we added them, and I looked at them. And I, I guess my only concern is it said, it says that people should be visible on the call. Um, our committee doesn't get laptops from the city. We're all set up on our own.
And that's why I just said that they're an advisory committee. You're, the other committees exist by virtue of charter or appointments by the council to do a spec, and, and your committee does not. We, I actually checked that with the city manager, because that's what I was concerned about, too.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Thank you, Mr. Furbish.
Thank you.
Well, computers next year, Lawrence, right?
Okay, John, don't give our stuff away. Nineteen dash nine seven two dash zero one. Ordered to declare a statement of, state, a statement of emergency and set forth an extended emergency ordinance amending Chapter 20 dispersment of warrants during the coronavirus pandemic 2020, thereby amending Chapter 20 to delegate the city manager to sign warrants on behalf of the city council. Is there a motion?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
A motion by Counselor Tuttle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. Motion and a second. Do we, Steve, do we need to really have a big discussion about this?
I don't think so, Ma- Madam Mayor. This is the third, uh, third, uh, extension of this emergency ordinance. The declaration of emergency still stands. It's been updated. Uh, as far as the ordinance is concerned, it would be effective for 91 days. It allows for, uh, me, as my position as city manager, to review the warrants and sign on behalf of, as a delegated authority for the city council during this period of time, for which it's very difficult to get into the office for the contingency of counselors to do this. It'll expire after 91 days unless the council lifts it prior to, uh, and you can always continue to do, utilize the emergency ordinance procedure to extend it, should we still be in this current situation of COVID.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
I'm gonna call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is another unanimous vote. Thank you. All right. Twenty-one dash three two dash zero one. Ordered to appoint two city council representatives, two members of the public, and one city administrator to serve on a committee. Be informed to set up a process for public input into naming of the new, into naming the new elementary school. Uh, I discussed this earlier. Um, I will tell you that, and I'll tell you the reasons why I'm appointing the people that I, I am. I am appointing Kendra Williams and Paul Ogier as two people who were born and raised in Sanford and have ties to this community, and, and have served in various, um, roles in the community as our citizen members. And, um, Counselor Hanselman, born and raised in, raised in Sanford, um, and Counselor Stackpole, who served on the school committee for a long time. Those are the, the Counselor Hanselman and Counselor Stackpole. Think it's really important to have somebody that recognizes the unique role that the school committee has in this, and to not overstep the bounds that we're trying to. What we want is, we want community involvement in this process, and this is one way to ensure that. And I appreciate the school committee involving the community, and I, and I want this process to go, it has to go pretty quickly, from what I understand. And as far as the city administrator, I'll leave that to Steve. It may just be a simple matter of setting up a Zoom for this group. I don't think that anybody's asking anybody to do a lot of work. So, if that's Larissa or whatever, I don't, I, that is the last thing that I want to do, is to give you more work. These people, I think, are perfectly capable of, once they, they have a link, doing the work that they need to do. Any discussions? Um, so we'll need a motion to approve?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Okay, so that was a.
Lanigan, let, let Counselor Lanigan have that.
Was that the first, the second? Okay, so, motion by Counselor Tuttle, second by Counselor Lanigan. Any more discussion?
As long as we don't name it after Lucas, right? Lucas?
Not gonna name it after anybody that's alive, John.
You, John, Senator Tuttle.
No, you have to be dead.
Oh, geez, no.
Working on that, Madam Mayor.
No, thanks.
I think that's a much easier way to just say, okay. Yes, I choose no.
J L, M C S, that's some good initials.
Okay, Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. That passes unanimously. And so, you'll let the school committee know, Steve, who our appointments are?
Yes, yes, we will.
Okey-dokey, thank you. All right, we are now, oh my gosh, council member comments. I will start with Counselor Martel.
Uh, I don't have anything else to add, um, but thank you for, for soliciting tonight and, uh, doing a good job of keeping everything moving.
Thank you. Appreciate those words. Counselor Hanselman?
No comments, but I have a couple of agenda items. Will we come back to that?
Okey-dokey. Counselor Stackpole?
Um.
Oh, wait, I skipped, Counselor, I'm sorry. I, I skipped, I'm sorry. I apologize, Counselor Tuttle.
Uh, briefly, Madam Mayor, I know that, uh, Counselor Stackpole and I have been voting the same way on, on most of every issue, so it's almost like that we're brothers from another mother, right, Bob?
Okay, John.
And that's, well, no. Finally.
Do you have any other comments?
Well, briefly, Madam Mayor.
Must be those tomatoes that you keep giving me.
Well, I got some in, in, down below, Bob. I'll bring them over to you. But I'm, uh, came across a book that I read in graduate school. It's called The True Believer: Thoughts of the Nature of Mass Movements, written by Eric Hofer in 1951. I recommend that everybody reads it today on what we're going through politically.
Thank you, Counselor Tuttle. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes, and, uh, thank you for the bit of humor, uh, Counselor Tuttle. I, I, I needed that. Uh, I, I don't know whether you can tell on the camera how red my face has been. I think I got so, uh, angry and upset over the, uh, health clinic amendment that I couldn't speak. Um, so, what I'm, we have a, a, a new mayor, uh, and a new counselor, and what I wanted to just briefly talk about, and this is not necessarily referencing any counselors, but I, I just want to throw out the word trust, okay? Uh, we can all disagree as a council, uh, but we do have to be able to trust each other, and I'm just gonna leave that there. And I'm gonna move on to, uh, information that we receive from, uh, employees. We've got to be able to trust that information. We have to be able to trust that information, or else we can't do our work. And on this issue, I feel twice set up. Uh, and not in a positive way. First of all, was that the issue, uh, came from the zoning committee, zoning subcommittee, which it didn't. And I had to face a meeting, run a meeting as the chairman of the subcommittee, where it was like, where did this come from? And then I found out later that there was documentation that it came from zoning subcommittee. It didn't come from zoning subcommittee, and we've cleared that up. And now with this other issue, look, everybody can make a mistake, and if this is a mistake, this was a mistake, but I think it, the, the issue of trust is still important. That you expect that the work is gonna be done following the lines that you lay out in, in the subcommittee. It's just an expectation. Now, you know, I'm, I appreciate Counselor Hurley's apology, but I don't think we should need to apologize, because it should have just been done the way we laid it out in the subcommittee. That was my expectation. Where I go from here, I don't know. I, I guess it's gonna just require, uh, further scrutiny on, on, uh, everything until some level of trust, uh, comes back here. Uh, and, uh, I feel bad for having to say this, uh, but it, it needs to be said. We have to trust each other. Uh, you know, and let me pick on the city manager for a minute. If we sit in a meeting and I don't trust the information or the numbers that he's providing me, we're, we're, we're in a whole lot of, we're in a whole lot of hurt in, in doing things positively. And so, you know, I want to say this loud and clear. We're all on the same team. We all have to trust each other. We can disagree to hell and back, okay, and argue. I'm, I'm all in favor of confrontation and expressing how everybody feels, but at the end of the day, we have to know that we all have each other's backs. We have to trust each other to all work together for the benefit of this community. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm calmed down from where I was a half an hour ago. Okay, so, uh, hopefully I made my point, and we'll move on.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Counselor Lanigan?
Yes, um, I'd like to first say happy birthday, uh, Madam Mayor.
Oh, gee, thanks.
January birthdays are the best, just so you know.
Well, when was it, Luke?
I think it was yesterday. Yesterday, wasn't it?
Happy birthday, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to say that. And then, um, I, I wanted to also comment, um, uh, almost to Bob's point, too, is, is, um, the, the trust factor is, is when we're getting information, um, this was, when this first came across, this, this issue was very contentious. Um, I was getting text messages, um, from other counselors that weren't on the committee. Um, we were getting emails and texts from, uh, people throughout the community that were worried about this. So, sometimes when, um, we do ask these questions, it, it's just we're doing the service to our, to the people that aren't in those meetings. And, um, I just, I just want that to be known, um, that, you know, sometimes that it might not seem like we do agree, but it, it's more to get the information out for the public, to let them know that it was well-vetted, all the questions are being asked. So, when we do get that follow-up question on Wednesday, when I wake up to that text message, why did you vote for it? Um, it, it's pretty well explained. So, I just, I, I hope that, you know, if, if anything that I have done or, or, uh, you know, argued against, it, it clarifies it a little bit. Uh, I'm not coming from it from any other angle of, other than representing people that are reaching out to me, and if you want me to represent you or your voice to be heard, all you have to do is text or email, and I'll make sure that it's heard. Um, I guess my final comment would be to that is, um, and this might be to Representative Tuttle and, um, Mayor Mistracchio. I know that when you ran for mayor, one of the, the selling points that I was actually happy, excited about having you as a mayor, even though I ran against you, is, is your connection to Augusta. And, um, I just want to state this. I, I know coronavirus is out there. It's actually, it, it's, it's stronger now than it's been. It's, it's flying around our community. It's flying around all around us. Um, however, um, we, we haven't seen the, the spread at, and, and I'm talking restaurants. I, I, I don't want to get this confused with social clubs or bars or anything like that, but when I, when I talk about restaurants, um, I don't know if you can explain to the governor that we have a lot of people that work second and third shifts that sometimes that only social interaction or that warm cook meal that they get is at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock coming back from work to go to Applebee's or the places that are open. Unfortunately, the only things that are allowed open now are Walmart, anything with a big corporate name to it, or fast food. So, I just, expressing, I, I, I know kind of the method of the madness behind why we want to shut them down at 9 o'clock, but really all it's doing is forcing more people into these restaurants in a shorter time period, and it's also hurting, um, the employees and the businesses themselves. So, just to, just wanted to state it. I've been getting a lot of comments about that from business owners, so, thank you so much for whatever you can do.
Well, message received, Counselor. Message received.
And, Ma- Madam Mayor, can I just address just one thing very briefly?
Sure.
Speak, speak directly to Counsel Lanigan and all the counselors. What I, what I was referring to was not members of the council. Okay, I don't feel that the members of, that there is a trust issue with members of the council. I have no negative feelings towards any, any council members. Uh, that's not what it's about. However, I am talking about the whole organization encompassing things. We need to work together, and we need to, to trust each other. We can disagree, but we need to be able to trust each other. So, certainly, uh, Luke, there's no, uh, uh, no, there's no hard feelings if, if, that, that's not really the right way to put it, but there's no lack of trust. Uh, you know, we're, we're all gonna agree and disagree, uh, on issues, but a- as long as, uh, we don't have to watch our backs around each other, that we get manipulated or set up or something like that. I think that, that takes things to a whole different level. And again, I don't feel that's happening with any council member. Uh, but i- in order for us to be productive, there has to be a level of trust here.
100%.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole, Counselor Lanigan, and now we'll go to Deputy Mayor Hurley.
I think everybody's said everything, like, become good.
All right, thank you. Um, I have just one thing that I, well, I have two things. The first thing is, I wanted to remind the community that the Sanford Backpack Program is having a fresh food distribution this Thursday, the 21st, from 4 to 6 at Willard and Edison School. So, they're on silent. So they're on simultaneously, you can go to either school. It's for anyone in the community. And I really, it's fresh food, it's a wonderful thing, and especially because school is closed this week and everyone's on virtual, sometimes it's hard to get the word out. So anybody that, really, you could, you could go and pick it up for your neighbor. The person doesn't have to go themselves, somebody else could go and, and pick up the box of food. So, um, the other thing, I've been getting a lot of emails and calls from people with wonderful ideas about how we can make Sanford better, and I just have to say, I'm just getting up to speed, have a little patience. I'm trying to figure out a way that I can have a virtual meeting and maybe shi- have people share with me and each other and, and have those kinds of community discussions that we would have, would be much easier were we to be able to meet in person. So, um, all I'm asking is for people to have patience, I will get back to you, I think your suggestions are wonderful and deserve discussion, I'm just, we're just, I'm just getting up to speed, so thank you very much. Uh, that's all I have. For comments, future agenda items, we'll go back to Counselor Martell.
Um, I didn't have anything...
Okay, you don't have to. It's okay to say nothing. I have nothing tonight. Counselor Hanselman, I know you have a few.
And, and first, Madam Mayor, thank you for the shout-out on the backpack program, um, and, and you dated yourself just a little bit. It's not at Edison School, but rather Lafayette.
Oh, I did, I wrote the wrong one down, didn't I?
So another one of our, one of our neighborhood schools, but so Willard School and Lafayette School, and I...
I forgot, I'm sorry.
Show up, yeah. Um, so two quick agenda items. One, I'd love to hear a public safety update on the online reporting, um, for the Sanford PD, uh, at our budget workshop, Counselor Lanigan was inquiring about the codes, uh, online capability, and, and that's just something we're working on at the PD level as well, so I'd love an update on that. Um, and that was grant funded, so I know there's some deadlines associated with, with implementing that as well. And then the other one, um, and I don't know if this is best addressed at public safety or even, uh, you know, a leadership meeting or what would be best, but, uh, you know, Chief Conley indicated that the PD is not moving forward with a council on racial equality, and I, I understand that decision, I, I really hear where he's coming from, but I, I don't think that city leadership can let this go by the wayside, and, you know, I, I really feel strongly that we have to continue the work on racial equity, implicit bias and reconciliation in the community, but my, my thought process is that to really have meaningful conversations, we need to look into bringing in some kind of, um, you know, essentially a moderator, somebody that can help us do that. I don't think that, you know, we want to put that pressure on any of our community leaders or our grassroots leaders or our youth or our citizens. I think we need to bring somebody in that can help us have some conversations, and I think it's a really important thing to do. There is grant money out there to do things like that, so, you know, I'd be happy to help work on it in some fashion, but I just want to, that to show up somewhere in somebody's conversation.
Thank you. We'll discuss where the pro- the appropriate place, but I think you're absolutely right, we need to have a discussion about it. We just can't let it go by the wayside. Um, let's see, Counselor Tuttle?
Well, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yeah, I, I just have, uh, one thing, um, and, uh, I, again, looking at, uh, you know, kind of turning the page here in our community, uh, uh, and, and future work that the, that the council can, can take on, uh, I, I'm very concerned about the mill area in downtown, and I, I speak to this in terms of economic development. Uh, I, I think that the, the council, uh, should it, uh, begin to look at the, the mill district as a, a true, an obstacle or a block, uh, that's in the way for truly, uh, redeveloping our downtown and making our, our city, uh, the downtown area in our city that much more livable. Uh, so, uh, you know, what I, what I'm asking is that, uh, we have an agenda item or we have some way to, uh, discuss how we can improve the situation with our mill area, and I'm, I'm speaking specifically around safety, uh, attractiveness, I'm staying away from the word beautification there, uh, but attractiveness, uh, and, and, uh, and livability, uh, in a sense, livability for the people that are around there and would visit there. Uh, I, I just see this as, uh, as a major problem. I think the, the abandonment of these mills on the, the city of Sanford, uh, and I recognize that they have owners and they have businesses in them, um, you know, has been going on for as long as I've been alive, if I understand the dates correctly. That's a heck of a long time. Uh, and I, I think it's time that we, uh, address the issue, uh, and, uh, try to improve that area. And again, I, I think it's a roadblock to economic development and the, uh, uh, more livability of, of our downtown area, which we're all, all working at.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I can agree with Counselor Stackpole, I've been saying that for years, Bob, I, particularly when it comes to Stent and Trust, you can't believe what the people, uh, worry about from a public safety perspective, how much longer that's going to go on. I've been told all my life that that's going to be redeveloped, and I really question whether that's going to happen, but we really need to discuss this issue, and I'm with you 100%, Bob. I almost, I, I promise not to say another word tonight.
Okay. Counselor, thank you, um, Counselor Stackpole. You're keeping a list, aren't you, Steve?
I am.
Thank you. Deputy, um, Counselor Lanigan?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'm good, I think, uh, some of those ideas were wonderful, especially, uh, Counselor Hanselman's and, and the mill, the mill, actually, Bob, I think a great place to comment on that is going to be at the getting together, the formation of the downtowns, to have some issues in the mill area, but I think the Stent and Trust announcement was amazing, wonderful.
And I don't have any, um, future agenda items, I think we've got a lot on our plate. I just want to thank you all for the hard work that we did tonight, and that includes all the staff that did all this work, worked all day, and then has been at meetings with us from 4:30 till now, so it's been a long day, thank you all, and, um, I'll declare us adjourned.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Bye.